Recording in progress.
Good evening, we'll call the order, a special planning commission meeting for Monday, August 28th, for the City of St. Joseph. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda review and adoption. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda at this time?
For the page two, second paragraph down, I think the hours are on within 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM, not 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Thank.
Is this for the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Sorry, am I ahead of myself?
Yep, yep.
Sorry.
That's okay. So you don't have any additions or anything Nate?
No, but we do have a new planning commission member this evening, so.
We should probably, uh.
Yes.
Mess with that.
Yes. So first of all, thank you for Isabella for joining us this evening and hopping right into it. So I don't know if you want to do any intro or anything like that.
Really?
Okay, perfect.
Well, welcome.
Thanks.
I read her application and welcome, it sounds interesting. You know, got a lot of background in this type of thing.
Excellent. I guess I'll move to adopt the agenda as it's in our packet.
Second.
We've got a motion and second. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. We've got the meeting minutes for August 14th in front of us.
Alright, so page two, paragraph two. I think the hours are on there, then 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM, not 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM, I believe is what it's supposed to be.
That's second paragraph there?
Yeah. I believe that's what it was.
Yeah.
That would make more. Okay, were there any other changes or corrections?
I'm going to approve them.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, meeting minutes are approved. With that, we've got old business.
Alright, let's hop right back into it. So just to run through a couple, just refreshers and that. I know we have our new planning commission member who was at the last meeting and the audience and that, but just want to quickly just go through just a few intros. Again, this is coming forth to the commission because we have a 14,000 square foot facility being proposed off Jade Road, special event facility. The subject property is about 60 acres, zoned rural residential with future land use low density residential. The planning commission voted to table this action at the last meeting, the August 14th meeting. The last meeting, planning commission had asked about four items to be provided as part of the resubmital. Those items that we had down were elevation drawings showing the height of the structure, the patio space needed to be clarified. We had a plan and then the applicant had provided notice to us that there had changed with the patio space, so we wanted to see that depicted. Also, we talked about ideas or solutions on how the sound can be buffered specifically on the north side, whether that's through a sound wall barrier type of idea, or potentially shifting the outdoor ceremony space to the east side of the property. Right now, that space is facing the north. And then also a graphic showing how the outdoor space looks with the bermed area and seating. So in relation to that first ask, the elevation drawing, so we did not receive the actual civils showing the elevations, but the applicant did provide a response stating that that proposed building would sit at about 38 feet from grade to peak. The maximum height in our rural residential district is 40 feet, so they would be under that. They did also provide some elaboration in regards to how that structure would look in relation to the topography and the bermed areas that exist on the subject site. They also did indicate that when it comes to roofing styles, that a manser type of roof would be proposed. That's where you have essentially a flat peak at the top of the structure. The patio space, so this is the updated plan that they did provide. You'll see on this that the patio space has been trimmed down. Prior plans had showed that that patio space wrapped around to the northwest corner of the building. So that was trimmed down to essentially just be adjacent to the outdoor ceremony space. Ideas or solutions on how the sound can be buffered more on the north side. So this was provided as part of the packet at the last meeting as well. Just showing some of the landscaping that they're proposing to do. We did update one of the conditions. So what you see in yellow is what we had updated for language. Not saying that the six-foot privacy fence is the solution, but it's a idea to start the conversation on that piece. And talking about how the space is going to be buffered. We did ask the applicant again to, you know, consider shifting that outdoor ceremony space to the east and they might be able to elaborate on that a little bit more on some of the reasoning as to why they aren't necessarily supportive of that, that idea. So this is the graphic just showing the outdoor space with the berm seating area that was provided as part of the update. Again, the interior of the building, formal dining area, indoor space, outdoor space, reception area, and then the bride groom dressing rooms. Skip through some of these. These were shown at the last meeting in regards to the existing site and the bermed areas and where that ceremony space will sit. So the planning commission again is tasked with adopting a finding of fact with conditions. Those conditions can include location of access points, fencing, screening, berming, sign restrictions, height and size of buildings, operating hours and noise levels, or other conditions that are related to protecting the public interest. Again, we still have that development agreement included as part of the recommendation for one of the conditions. The one change to that is the last time we had spoke, we had talked about a right turn lane potentially being included. Further discussion with our engineer showed different trigger points on that right turn lane and the request was not meeting those trigger points. So we did have a discussion with that and, you know, since that trigger point hasn't been met, that has been removed from the development agreement. Public works also agreed as well as on our engineer and our staff on that. Again, that's just the graphic showing the water sewer extension. Again, from a staff perspective, we are asking the applicant to extend that to the driveway entrance. I know that their position is to extend and connect to the building itself. So these are just the, again, the staff recommended conditions of approval. Won't go through all these again. Essentially what you see in yellow on the screen is the language that was added. So again, we added language tied to a six-foot privacy fence for screening for the outdoor ceremony space. What you see in purple is one of, is the areas that the applicant isn't fully in agreeance with staff on. And we understand number three, when we talk about a development agreement being executed and that should be, the extension of water and sewer should be installed prior to building permit. They're requesting prior to certificate of occupancy just because of timing of construction. Number eight, so there is some concern on the, the language on purple from the applicant's perspective. What we did add is that language in yellow. When we, what we tried to do here really is we tried to curtail some of the concern with kind of trying to restrict some of the outdoor sound to just when ceremony is occurring within that space. There is a gray area on what was defined as ceremony, you know, is it prior to the actual proceedings? Is it just the proceedings itself? Is it after the proceedings? So there is some gray area in that. From a staff perspective, what we are looking at is when a, that space is being used and when proceedings are happening, you know, then speakers and similar devices or that, you know, could be used to help proceed that ceremony. Everything else has been kept the same. We also tried to just clarify that the accessory structure is just limited to accessory related uses. Don't really need to put that in there, but wanted to provide some more black and white in that. We would still hold the applicant to how we define accessory structure within our code and our ordinance. We also, for condition 15, we just elaborated on, you know, if a bride or groom space that is meant to house the bride or groom overnight or any lodging additions, that that would then trigger a amendment to the conditional use permit, of which they'd have to come back and resubmit an application for. So again, the action that's requested, and I did provide a printoff of the resolution and then a printoff of these slides with conditions to the commission up there. So kind of what I'm hoping can be accomplished is that one recommendation is provided by adopting a finding of fact. And if there's other conditions that the commission wishes to add or subtract, we can kind of do a live edit of the conditions on the PowerPoint and, you know, add if there's another condition in a different font color and that. So that way we're capturing exactly what that recommendation is. Again, the council serves as the final authority on all CUPs. We do have that CUP scheduled for September 5th council, provided we can get a recommendation tonight and provided that we can turn that around with creating the memos and other things we need for the council packet in time for the meeting next week. Otherwise, it would be September 18th council. With that, be happy to answer questions. Otherwise, what I'll do is kind of go back here and have the conditions here and that, should the commission want to talk about these specific ones.
Just a real quick question Nate, and not in the order that we've got up there that I think is a good idea to go through, but the right turn lane. I know they said that we don't need it at this point, but if that should come up in the future where a right turn lane is required because traffic flow, you know, picks up or because it's just safer, would that be at the applicant's expense or the city's expense? And should that be spelled out?
That's a good question. I don't think that we could force the applicant after the fact to put in a right turn lane if things had changed. I think if a right turn lane was then warranted because of other factors, like say we have more housing development that occurs or something like that, then it would likely be a part of a street project and maybe assessed to the property, but it'd probably be part of a larger street redo of that road.
So I, I think we, I think one of the things we talked about, and this is not the site, but coming back if something were warranted, the second QuickTrip location that was put in in town with that write-in only off of the side road, I think we had some conditions on that one. So are we able to do something similar? Because that was a, if, if it, if it deems that it's not being used as the intent is for a write-in only, we had the ability to require modifications.
Okay, so you're saying if it meets the threshold down the road with the increase in traffic or whatever?
Due to this development, this specific development. I mean, obviously if something else goes in further down the road that's generating traffic and things like that and changing the traffic patterns, I can see. But I, I mean, I can see stacking and loading times when, you know, guests are all arriving at the same time or all leaving at the same time with school or after-school activities and events or weekend sporting events at the school or whatever might be going on, that there may be some unforeseen traffic conditions prior to this road being improved beyond its current level of service.
Gotcha. So I'm not 100% certain, but I would lean towards you likely could do that.
But would it be? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The site you're referring to is McDonald's when we put, when?
Nope. No, when they put that at the QuickTrip, they've got the entrance, that's the entrance.
Is it by the armory over there, that one?
That, that QuickTrip.
Yeah.
Coming off of 75, when you turn at that light, their first entrance is a write-in only and it's not an exit. And I believe when they came in with that site plan, there were some things that we, we talked to them about and it was kind of in conjunction with Stearns County as requiring them. If, if that were not being used as just an entry, right entry, that the city could come back and require.
That concept came back after the plans were already made from the county, because that was more of a county, that's a county road intersection.
That is a county road there, isn't it?
Yeah.
You're right. Okay. That does make it a little more difficult.
That thought came back after the county was all, you know, like McDonald's.
That's another county road though there too.
Right, and that's, that's going to have a, well, another year, there's going to be a roundabout in there.
Yep.
Based upon traffic flow.
I, I just, I'm concerned with, because I know originally we talked about some of the original conditions we put on the conditional use permit would have been something like being on a principal or on an arterial road or some of those kind of things.
Yep.
Which are typically designed more to hold, to carry more higher levels of traffic, whereas this currently, this road, there's no shoulders, it's not wide, it's not designed for heavy traffic flow, at least not through that area. I mean, obviously to the school has been improved and when you get to county road two, you know, as you extend on. You know, some of my concerns come in with if this, you know, if this is the only development that occurs in the foreseeable future before that road expands and there's traffic concerns and safety issues with traffic, you know, it, it shouldn't be on the city nor should it be on the residents along that road to necessarily have to pay for improvements that they aren't the cause of. I mean, even if it is in the form of assessments with overall road improvements, I mean, I get, I, I get that that's the process for road improvements, however, if it's solely due to a specific development or a specific addition to that road, I have a tough time just letting that one go personally. I mean, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it because it doesn't currently meet.
So one, one thing that I was looking at, because I, I went out there and met Ken and Kristen out there and I get where they're saying there isn't enough traffic and they don't know yet how much traffic that is gonna create, but when I, when you, when you leave the area where they're proposing to have that road, there, the blind spot from the south is, is, you know, I was like, okay, let me check, let me check, because of traffic can people come down that road, you know, heading towards the school. Wonder if making that first entry a enter-only two-lane kind of come in, so one, the right lane can go up around to the building, the people to come into the left can go to the parking and then exit and enter on the other end. We don't want people exiting that, that main entrance.
Well, that's my, another question I had was with regards to those two access points, actually technically three, if you look at the accessory building as well. Obviously, to be able to empty that southernmost parking, I see why there's another access onto Jade Road because otherwise to empty that would take a long time in the queue. Is the intent for that to be an in-and-out entrance to that southern parking lot? If I can, I mean.
Yep, applicant can respond to that.
So both points, we're looking at entrance and egress from the site. And we've spoken with District 742 already, they're exploring and expanding the school zone out so that would reduce the speed limit out there, which is our safety concern as well with that hill. So they're currently in that process of that review. Just to see, there was one step to see if it was within their authority to just simply do it, to move that and reduce that speed limit out, which is our intent with it. Realistically, we, we do know what type of traffic flow is going to be there. Even just being at a wedding that was off of a county road with no shoulders just on Saturday, they had, I would assume right around 300 attendees at that, maybe even a little bit more, it was approximately 300. People come in over a half an hour time period. They do have one set of overflow parking. It's, there's no right turn lane, there's no turn-in lane, there's no changes to that road. And even Rolling Ridge, which is similar size, has no turn lane. There's no anything and a, and a higher speed limit there as well. I don't think the, the odds of everybody showing up at one time and sitting on the road waiting to get into that entrance or waiting to come out at the exact same time is pretty minimal. So we don't see it as a, as, you know, we see a decent number of cars coming in and out, but it's spread out over a good amount of time as well.
Okay. Um, since you're up there, I do have another question. I know at one, one point in time, I believe at the last meeting, you mentioned some reconfiguration of the parking. Has anything been looked, have you, I think one of the lots was going to be possibly shifting or something like that now that you had additional topo? Did you do anything with that or has anything with that changed at this point?
It's exploratory, but essentially what we're trying to do is, and in speaking with the neighboring property owner out at the site, the idea was to move the parking a little bit further away and kind of behind one of the berms to get more parking over there. So really kind of, I, I don't know how to really describe it, shifting it further south so that it was away from the main ceremony site and a little bit further away so we could kind of get better flow through there as well and kind of lessen that noise burden, so to speak, if there is anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything that, like, to put up, I mean, since there isn't a shoulder, can, are they going to be able to put up a sign that says event in progress or something like that to at least alert people that there's an event and slow the hell down when you're coming around the corner?
Like a temporary sign?
Yeah, you know, I don't, but.
As, as long as it meets our sign code. It might be conflict, you know, I mean, sure, I, you know, I think our, our sign code does allow like temporary sign to be placed. There's limits and restrictions to the number of times they can have a sign out there. If it's a safety type of directional sign, you know, maybe that's a little bit different, I'd have to probably.
That's probably something that could come upon requests of the, the police chief or something like that, if they're seeing traffic issues or something like that, possibly?
Potentially, yeah.
What, what is the speed limit past the school?
Um, so once it get past this, the school zone, I think the school zone is 30 or 25.
25.
Um, then I believe it's unmarked, so it's, I think, 55. Yeah, yeah.
How, do you know Nate, how far this first entrance is, the northernmost main entrance is from the nearest school entrance driveway? On that school side, roughly 400 feet-ish? Okay. And the spacing between the two driveways?
Are you talking about from here?
250 to 300-ish, give or take? Okay. Yeah, the, you know, from, okay, so it is a fair, yeah, that's kind of what I was looking at.
Yeah, it's probably definitely longer than.
Like right there.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's a long ways.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so it's probably 400 feet from the property line and then the additional 350.
And I think the school, let's see if I can. Give me, come on. The little guy's got to pop up so I can do street view on here.
Yeah, good luck with that.
I want to say the school zone is about like right this area, so just, just past the entrance.
Probably right in front of the ballpark. I'm ma- imagined it's by the ball.
Probably right at that section.
Correct. Yep, it's about right here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I know it was mentioned about looking at the school zone area. So I, I have kind of prepped our engineer a little bit, or the St. Cloud APA, St. Cloud Area Transportation Planning Organization, had received an inquiry from the school district regarding how would they go about expanding that school zone area. So that is being looked at. I think that's a concern and shared across the, the board, whether it's from the applicants or staff or whoever. So that is being looked at to see what, what goes into expanding that school zone speed.
Are there any numbers available for the traffic on that road?
Was there something in our packets that talked to?
So, um, right now, it, it doesn't have like the specifics other than that the annual daily traffic is below 1,000 and the trigger point is 1,500.
And that says this is a low-volume road assuming less than 600 vehicles per hour.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, okay.
Yeah.
So is that with the school numbers in there, the school zone?
Yeah, yep, that's, I think they look at high, uh, high peak, low peak, you know, middle.
There's some peaking factoring that goes on, I don't, traffic wasn't my forte.
And that doesn't take into consideration the new traffic for the event center, right? That's just current?
Yeah.
So.
Or projected maybe.
That, that does look at the projected, so how they go about that now, again, I'm not an engineer, but what they looked at was the parking spaces and then looked at similar sites that have the similar amount of parking spaces in that and then they generate a number and then, you know, that's how they come up with how this would project for increases to the daily traffic. Yeah.
So are there, oh, go ahead.
Well, no, so it's still below that number once we factored in the other, it's still below the criteria that they had set.
Correct.
So unless there's any more like overall questions, maybe we should start by going through these recommended conditions of approval one by one and kind of just starting from there, just in an effort to keep things moving?
I do have one thing here, just when they talk about the, the build, the top of the building would be 14 feet above the elevation, so they give it an elevation of 1095, a finished floor and then 1109 top of the berm. But the building is 38 feet, so wouldn't that be 24 feet above the elevation, not 14? If my math is right, maybe my math is wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because if you're building 30 feet tall and we have 14 foot of berm essentially, the building would still sit 24 feet above the top of the berm, not 14?
Yeah, so top of hill is 1109.
I don't matter a lot, but just so the.
Yep.
If it was right.
14 feet above that. I think so.
Yeah, it's 10.
Again, not that maybe it matters a lot, but for line of sight maybe, but. So the height of the building in its current design phase is not consistently 38 feet across the entire piece. So on the ceremony end, it's a much shorter elevation. Or I guess a lower elevation, so I would actually assume it to be closer to 28 feet. On the far end, which you would be looking at here, the far west end, that's what's currently designed at 38 feet, which that berm, I really, parallel to that on the north side of the property is actually about a 25-foot berm roughly. So it, it could be construed as more closely to, to 14 feet. Realistically, the odds of it staying at that height are pretty minimal. We don't see the need to be at that height for many things, but it's still below the 40 feet required. But it does come down on the ceremony end to what. Um but it does come down um on the ceremony and um to what extent exactly? I don't know, it's, but it's all one level, right? So just because the building height is up there, there's no movement, there's no windows, there's nobody up there, there's no light emanating up there.
Is there proposed fire sup- fire suppression within the, within the building?
We, ev- every single thing that we've told uh the architect is that we're planning for it.
Okay.
At, at every phase, this will be, I, I'm.
It's required, required, I believe, for fire suppression.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's required or not, it's, it's going in.
Sense from all, all sorts of different reasons.
Hundred percent agree, yes.
Okay, would you be opposed to that being a condition?
Um I don't, well, I think.
Fire suppression meeting any required codes?
Yeah, I mean, meeting any required codes, I, I don't know if the code is at a hundred occupants or whatever it is, but yeah, I mean, we, we have. No reason not to say, hey, if it meets, if code says we have to have it, we.
Where I, where I get concerned is, this is a very large facility. And to have a occupancy projected event size of three hundred people for that large of facility, no, I understand. With your facility flow and things like that, I, I envision that there would be. The ability to house a much larger event than three hundred people, whether that's the intent or not. Um and, and so I get, I get kind of, cause I think there's some sort of three hundred, three hundred person threshold in the code if I'm not mistaken. And that, that right there, but I also believe it's based off of square footage of the building if I'm not mistaken, too, as far as. What the rated occupancy is. I, I, I'm assuming we've got the architect here, is that something that you can speak to a little bit, or?
The, the building is, is currently designed.
Sprinkled, okay, okay, thank you. So if we start, so if we start with number one on the staff recommended conditions of approval, the property owner is responsible for meeting all federal, state, local and city requirements. And obtaining any and all permits and licenses, that's just cookie cutter language, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's template language.
Um second one, the applicant sells, sells, shall submit a site plan application and all site plan standards shall be met and approved. Prior to allowing a building permit to be issued for the subject property, that's just general ci- city practice, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Um that a development agreement shall be executed as part of this approval. And the applicant shall extend sewer and water lines to service their property as shown in exhibit A of the development agreement. Um sets extension shall be required to be installed prior to, and then whatever that language becomes. Whether it's building permit approval or certificate of occupancy, that's probably up for discussion. Um currently at this time, the exhibit A that we're showing shows the utility extension along Jade Road. And not crossing through the property, correct?
Correct, so it ex- it shows the water going to the driveway entrance.
And the sewer tube, sanitary as well?
Yep.
Yep, correct, yep.
Cause I know at one point the applicant had shown it kind of coming from the corner across, and I looked at that and said, that's a lot of dirt to cut through to put in sewer and water.
Yeah.
Um and then to put back that berm that it would go through too, um I would think that it would be more economically feasible to put it along the road when you start looking at. Um elevations and excavation costs, but.
And, and to be fair, you know, the applicant, we are, you know, staff and applicant are, are a little bit at odds on, you know. We understand their, their perspective, um our perspective is to extend that to the, the driveway entrance. You know, typically in a normal subdivision or plat, the utilities would get extended from the beginning of the property line to the end of the property line.
So this is kind of an intermediate.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, a middle ground for that.
Think is probably appropriate for this facility or for the site plan, I would think, for this proposed use and the site plan. Um so as far as on the language, um prior to building permit app approval versus certificate of occupancy. I'm assuming that. You know, once the foundation goes in, you can work on the building, you may not be able to dig in sewer and water at the same time, kind of a concept, is that kind of where the concern is coming from?
Yeah, that's where the applicant outlined to us, yep.
So with it being purple, you're saying that this city would like to see it completed first before?
Um no, just the purple is just uh one of the, the concern area that, of the language that the applicant had expressed.
Well, and without the certificate of occupancy, they can't host an event anyways, so I would have no problem with it stating certificate of occupancy.
Okay, yeah, water and sewer will get installed, it's just a matter of, you know.
Timing.
Yeah, the, the, the timing and that, so. Is, is that the consensus of the commission, certificate of occupancy?
Occupancy, I think that's fine personally. I think we've got everybody agreeing to that one.
Okay.
Okay, um so moving on to number and, and every, number three, everybody's a goo- good with, with the certificate of. Sorry, I can't speak today with the certificate of occupancy language rather than the building permit approval, correct?
Yes.
All right, number four, all lighting shall meet city ordinance, uh lighting wall and poles shall be full cutoff style or hooded. That's kind of general city language too, isn't it, as far as what we're requiring?
Yeah, that's the current standards in uh commercial or multifamily residential properties.
Does our city ordinance address any like special lighting, like holiday decoration, lighting or anything, do we?
No.
We don't, it would just be, it fall back on the nuisance ordinance type of a thing again, probably?
Likely, correct, yeah.
Okay.
I did have one other thoughts and perhaps you might be able to, to enlighten me on this, but the windows that face north from your building, they're gonna be pretty. Like tall all the way up practically to the Manser Brook, to the bottom of Manser Brook, right, they're gonna be tall windows.
Um so right now, the design has the, um I believe. Eight to ten feet worth of glass, so kind of to the ceiling, uh twelve-foot interior walls. The glass that goes up, um in my recollection of sitting with the architects, we have to figure out whether those are. Um actual dormers that let in light, uh whether those can sit in between the trusses, so to speak, or columns. Um and how that works.
You're, you're not wrong in that, but I do believe, I do believe they are intended to go up to fourteen to sixteen feet with a split. That should still on that end of the building be covered by the berm though.
How, how many, how many of those dormers do you?
As I was talking, there were three or four.
Four? One, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, on that north side, again, it, it's still coming to fruition, but there would be. It would be appropriate to the width and height of the building, right, I mean aesthetically pleasing within there, so if there was four or five of them.
My concern is that while we've got, you know, down-facing lights exterior, you know, that's fine. But eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, you've got your inside really lit up, which you would. Those windows are open and that light will be escaping out, and I'm thinking that blinds, motorized knockout blinds like what we have right here in this room. Would be appropriate at sunset, after the sun goes down, everybody says, ooh, ah, pretty sunset, if you could see it. This blinds, the blinds would come down and then that would block that light from escaping from your building, your roof. Outside, uh it'll just be a way to protect some of the, the neighbors from the light coming out of your building.
So you're saying if they're, let's call them working dormers for lack of a better phrase, if they're actual windows that see outside and inside to the.
Dormers, if the dormers would be a concern, because most dormers are still at a, at a different level, and if your dormers are actually gonna be seen into that room. That may be a concern, I'm talking about your big, your big fourteen foot windows or twelve foot windows. Those are pretty tall, they're gonna let a lot of light out at night, um they're gonna be pretty bright, and I'm thinking that after sunset.
Yeah, those are still gonna be, those are still gonna be far below any berm level, any. I mean, those, if you're looking at a, a twelve-foot maximum height within those. Um that's generally well hidden behind anything that's already naturally occurring, not including any vegetation on top. We're just like talking about straight dirt levels are far above that uh level. Um but it would be something to consider, um shades of sorts.
I think it's a relevant thing to consider once we establish structurally where the windows get to be, um how they're there.
Can we state something in the condition that um light emitted from the interior of the building? Be considered at, upon site plan review? I mean, ways to mitigate or, you know, if there's some sort of language that says, hey, if these windows are operating and letting light in. And it's beyond the berming and it's.
So part of the site plan requirements will require a photometric plan to be submitted.
Does that take into account interior spaces though?
It just exterior, yeah, um we. Yeah, I, 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 I don't think it calls out interior within there.
We're not saying that anything is necessarily required, because we don't know the style, you know, exactly what's going to be installed, but is that something that we can say? Because this is a concern, upon site plan review. The light emitted from the interior of the building to adjacent properties also be considered? Or ways to mitigate, I, I don't know, I mean.
I, I, I think about, you know. Like we have solar film on our windows facing that side, because in the evening it, it's bright. But and then the evening, if there isn't anything, even a solar shade, like, you know. I can, you know, I met you guys, I know what your, what your concept you're going for, but at night, if that whole side of the building. Has nothing, whether it be the, the glare effect or solar shades. You know, I get it till it, it's during the day, but at night, I could just imagine there's no amount of, you know, trees that are gonna, or berm that's gonna emit this like. Oh, it's like this little city right next.
Well, and keep in mind, after dinner, most times ceremonies and ceremony spaces are dim.
But then there's flashing disco lights and the DJ lights that are, you know, it's like a.
Depending on, but yes. But, yeah, depending on, yeah, I mean, I, that's what I was envisioning to.
I, I think that, I, I, you know, when I'm looking at it going. For you guys as, as a, a factor, would it be easier to say, okay, let's, let's look at that as a condition to say. After, in the evening, when no one cares, they can't see outside anyways, because the lights in the room aren't gonna let them to see out there. To be ha- to have that, otherwise. Consider the fence, that might, a six foot might not help you absorb the, that light even. And in what is the cost of putting in something like, these are, these are completely opaque. But, you know, I've seen some that, these are because they're glaring at people's eyes, you're not worrying about that, you're worrying about light emitting. And I have, like I said, those solar ones where when you're on the outside looking in, it really helps. So I, 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 I just try to look at the cost factor of.
S- so a, a couple options, I think, uh one, you could, as a commission, look at. Additional screening methods on that side if that is a concern. Or two, um what I had typed in here was just photometric plan shall include interior and exterior light pollution. And then we would take that and then just review that um as part of the photometric plan when it's submitted during site plan review. And then we would hold them to our standards um within our light ordinance.
Is it possible to include interior light pollution on a photometric plan?
So, yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
Submitting a site plan.
No. Right.
Yep.
Um.
It's a good question, yeah.
You know, I think that that's gonna be a difficult to find somebody who can effectively do that and have it mean anything. Um other than put some numbers on paper and, and make it show what they want it to show, kind of a deal.
Right, yeah.
Is there, um, what does our lighting, what does our lighting ordinance state? I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but do we have that, do we have access to it? Sorry.
I wanna say it's, um. I don't have access to it, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I wanna say it's like half of a foot candle at the property line or something like that. Um it can't, it can't exceed more than half a foot candle at the property line, um.
Can language be put in then that says, if we do a photometric plan after the fact? And then once everything is done and completed, you do a photometric evaluation and if it is determined that, that there is an excess of. That candlelight amount of light at the property line, that then, whatever the solution would be, whether it's lines or some other form of. Uh workaround in order to reduce that light, can that be put in after, can that be put in and made as part of the photometric?
Well, when we review the photometric plan, before we approve it, we make sure that it's not exceeding that amount to begin with.
But that's just the exterior.
Correct.
Um. Can we do something with language saying screening to. Screening to limit light pollution from interior sources shall be. Review, I mean, to, in relation to, you know, cause I'm, I'm just envisioning. If the berms are high enough and the trees are high enough and there's enough year-round foliage on the trees, that maybe it's not an issue. However, without having the full site plan and the architectural plans and without that coming back in front of us at all. I wanna protect the fact that we're not gonna be projecting light from the building outward to adjacent properties.
I was considering, there's a difference between being a hundred feet away and seeing light from a window. Versus the light coming out to the property line and exceeding to have a, shoot a, a.
Right, yeah, that's the challenge, yeah.
It's still not gonna make, it's still not gonna shine over here.
Polluting the neighborhood of your life.
Yeah, cur- correct, it, it, it would all come down to the measurement of that light. At the property line and whether that exceeds that standard or not, um.
With these dormer types.
Yeah.
And that could vary from time of year, from fall to spring.
Depending on what plantings are out there and what existing.
Yeah, there's no deciduous type. Is that the pine?
No, it would be coniferous.
Coniferous type.
Coniferous, yeah, not deciduous.
I think maybe we, maybe we can address this better rather than with the lighting ordinance, maybe we can address it better in the screening. Though that's talking mainly about outdoor ceremony space shall be fully screened, um.
Well, on the lighting though too, are we, is the, the city ordinance require the street lighting and stuff like that too? Are they gonna have to have lighting at the, uh?
At their entrance?
Yeah, at their entrance in Negrasod.
No, we would not uh require lighting on the street as part of this, no.
And if there was to be lighting at that entrance, it would still have to meet the city requirements for being hooded and whatnot?
Yeah, if the applicant is proposing lighting, whether it's through, um I know one idea that they had was, you know, to kind of have an entry sign. You know, where you have the, the lane coming in and then lane leaving on that first entrance and then have a sign there, so any. Lighting from that sign would one have to of course meet the sign ordinance, but then two would have to be hooded or controlled or projected down. So it's not shining on the road.
Do you know, like at the entrance and stuff, something like a fancy gate?
I think, so that, that first en- entrance, the north driveway entrance is planned to be wider than average, right? For safe entrance and egress from the property, um we're playing with a couple of, you know, do we have a, an island sign there? That is almost like a, I liken it to like a, a neighborhood entrance sign where there's a.
Monument type of sign or something like that, perhaps?
Be a good way to put it, um you know, if we do something where it is top-down and, and that's deemed safer for that. It's gonna meet anything that the city puts forth in their code to say, this is a typical street light at an entrance, if that's what's necessary there. Um but it's not, we're not looking for a neon flashing sign that's.
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna have a scrolling flashing, congratulations, Joe and, Joe and Sue and, and that kind of stuff, that's not really going with your style.
And we wouldn't allow that.
Right, yeah, the moving signs aren't allowed anyways, so, yeah, so, um. So all lighting shall meet city ordinance, lighting wall and poles shall be full cutoff style or hooded, um. Can we add something like. Screening. Shall be required. If, no, that doesn't make sense, maybe we just leave that be.
I mean, if they follow the light ordinance, then we, I mean, if they.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, one, you know, if, if it, if that photometric plan, but I know the photometric plan's exterior, if it meets that. You know, then that's what we would review as part of that, um, the commission can still have the ability to add screening. On that side if you wished, um, if it's a concern or a big enough concern for that.
I think maybe we can address that with, I think I've got an easier way to address it with number six on here when we're talking about screening. So, I think if we leave number four as it is, meet lighting code, any.
I think we can address it, if it's important, then we should address it then in another spot.
Sure. Um, if we go on to number five, all parking shall be met on site, there shall be no parking in the public right of way. I believe the road has signed no parking at least most of the way down there already.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we just, um, included that just to.
No, I think that's, I think it's, I think it's necessary, um, but like I said, I think it's already signed that way anyways. Um, and then number six, the outdoor ceremony space shall be fully screened with trees, shrubs. And a six-foot privacy fence as required by ordinance to limit impacts to the adjacent residential property to the north, that's a long sentence. Our landscape and fencing plan shall be submitted and approved as part of the site plan application, screening shall be of sufficient height and opaqueness. Coniferous trees will be required to achieve year-round screening and final plan will be determined at time of site plan. Um, if the purpose of the six-foot fence is for noise, I don't think it's gonna do a darn thing. Other than maybe reflect it right back to the facility and then let it bounce out somewhere else, um.
How, how, what, what is the, it just says six-foot privacy fence, from where, from one end to the, I mean, what, what is the?
It said the ceremony space, the outdoor ceremony space.
Just the outdoor.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Round it, I mean, it's kind of vague, so to speak, okay.
Yep, that's fair.
Instead of the, just the outdoor ceremony space, could you make it the entire building be fully screened?
That's kind of where I was, that's kind of where, where I was going with, something like that was the, um. The building adjacent to, or the building. Yeah, rather than the, I think it should adequate, I mean, there needs to be sufficient screening along that whole side of that building, I mean. Both from the wedding attendees' point of view as well as from the. And some of it may be adequate already with the berming that's there, um, but if there's some gaps and holes, I think it'd be really nice to be able to drop some trees in and do some. Something else to kind of supplement it, but I would rather see it say the, um, yeah.
I guess I have more of a question about fencing in general, maybe this is more for you guys, um. I guess, what's kind of the, how are you gonna keep people from wandering out into the woods? When they're, you know, drinking, when people start drinking, they're, they do weird things, um, are you putting like a fence around?
There's already currently a lot of barbed wire.
Okay.
We will not be adding electric fence.
Just kidding.
Yeah, part of, part of the conversation on this is. In meeting with the property owner to the north, Commissioner Mick, we share this concern, I believe. How to properly mitigate what could possibly be seen as a gap. Um, when we talk about this specific setup with a six-foot privacy fence. You know, if this was on flat ground and nothing else was there. The. What that actually equates to is twenty feet at a minimum, twenty feet of fencing. That's now been placed around the building, because at a minimum, we have fourteen feet worth of a berm that's there, so I think. To say we need six feet, six foot run on top of that in every place, I think it comes down to actually just simply being more respectful and coming. Together with a plan saying, if there's a gap there, because there is also a spot where. There's a, we'll call it twenty-plus foot berm, but that berm cuts into the north residence. So, how do you suspend the fence there, right, and how do you run it across there, that's more about just coming up with a respectful solution to the spots that. Need it, um, because there, again, we're looking at minimum of twenty feet now worth of height. From the grade where a ceremony would be held to the top of that fence. And I just don't think that that would be required of any facility in, in any other scenario, so. The, the ideas at this point is we do want fencing on top of that berm anyway, we want it more along the property line. Because we don't want people, there's no barbed wire there, so, we don't want people, yeah, right, yeah.
Just kidding.
We don't want people accidentally going over there, even if it's for a good photo opportunity or something, because the fall colors are there. We don't want them going on to somebody else's property, um, and we want it to look nice. It is really difficult and Nate can attest, we've gone through wording on this, because. How do you say the north side of the building, you could all of a sudden run into two hundred yards of fencing that now has to be suspended into the air? Or around the ceremony site, now you've got a U-shaped fencing around the outside of your ceremony space, when you already have U-shaped. Berms in some of the spots, so, um. I, I do know that we're trying to remove intent and we're trying to get things clearly stated. But I really do think we can cut this down to, it's an agreeable screening plan that's put in place by. By us in the city and going in and relying on that, because there are some unique factors to this. And I don't think, just simply saying six-foot privacy fence is going to, um, satiate any needs. Realistically with how the ceremony site is set up and how that topography flows on the north side of there, that would be difficult to.
So, the, the, the. I agree, that's why it's, it's kinda like. The outside ceremony in itself is the problem, and the time, you know, I'm looking at some of the time where it's not. After or up till nine PM, that's like stating you're gonna have an outdoor ceremony and after social hour up until nine PM. Because when we were out there, you had said, cause there's also for the ceremony, there's a berm from Jade Road. To where they wanna park, that's kind of the comment, he, he wanted to tuck that in there. You had stated too, even you could hear the kids playing down at the park, so that berm really is, in my opinion. Not gonna do anything with sound, I just, we keep talking about the berm that's gonna help mitigate that and. In my opinion, it would be great if that building was turned and that. In that fashion, so that was the whole back of it, but it's not, it's turned to the side, that sound travels, you know, I hear the kids from the playground from my house. Um, and it's usually kids waiting at school that are, you know, they're screaming, but. You know, no amount of berm, I, it's, it's kinda like its own little tunnel right there, it's, I think the noise is gonna project. It's almost like you're in this amphitheater, you know, you're down and all of a sudden, everything goes out, I, I don't know, I, I agree, I don't know what, uh, fence. Other than help for people wandering, help for eyesight visual, I mean. I don't have junk in my yard, but if I did, you'd be like, I wanna put a fence up right away, cause I don't wanna look at the neighbor's junk, you know, but. I might get some goats back there, I was gonna get goats back, um, but. I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what makes sense, and that's why this is so difficult, because I just. I feel like it's just that outside ceremony itself holding two hundred people and the timing is more of the issue versus. Having a quaint outside ceremony where it's meant to be, you know, an, an hour. Hour, two hours before, you know, maybe before to sit and then afterwards, but I feel like. That that purpose can be ex- would be expanded where now it's, you know, two hundred people outside. Talking loud, you gotta have amplified sound now because of, you know, all the people there, so I just don't know, I.
Are we, are we talking about two, and, and maybe we're talking about two different kinds of fences, you're talking about a privacy fence along the property line to protect, you know.
I think it was dual, right, privacy is meant to help with the noise and privacy.
Thought, is that kind of a fence along the property line, I was also thinking of more of a sound absorption barrier. Living fence type thing that could actually be integrated into your landscape plan right around your ceremony. So, you've got the curb ceremony center, and behind that, you've got your annuals, perennials, your shrub mix, colorful flowering. Then you start moving into taller trees right behind your ceremonial center. If right in the middle of that, before you get to some of your taller trees, and in behind your more colorful bushes as you, as your landscape goes up. You've got a soundproof barrier, a wall, six feet, eight feet tall, that would follow the curve of your ceremony center. And if the living wall, I've seen living walls where they actually have sound barriers inside and plants drumming along them to. To blend right in with the landscape design. That would, that would prohibit or at least minimize the sound coming out of the ceremony center from going back up to the property to the north. And then that might integrate well with your landscape design there, and then a privacy fence further out if required. To help protect the property at that, at that point.
Yeah, so part of this is, we did take all of this into consideration, the. The outdoor ceremony spaces canted just as much northeast as it is straight north, right, so we are projecting technically away. Anything that bounces off the building projects away, um, I, I mean, let's be honest though, we are. Call it a half mile away from ninety-four, and you can hear the constant hum of ninety-four, right, there's. There's a point where it comes down to, are we doing the best that we can to mitigate these things? But then also realize that if we do them within the noise ordinance and it's respectful sound levels within the timeframes that were given. Then there's no ability to actually go in and soundproof an exterior space completely, right?
Soundproofed, I understand that, you know, I know what sound engineering is and I know you have, you know, you can't soundproof it.
Sure.
But you can certainly mitigate any, and there, I'm just looking at different ways to try to mitigate.
And, and, and what we're trying to say is, putting it into a fourteen-foot berm or twelve-foot berm or ten-foot berm. Your dirt berm is gonna do a better job of mitigating than many types of fences are gonna do. If we're doing it respectfully within noise ordinances, I think that's the biggest implication here is. Are we just being respectful of those properties around us in any way, shape or form? And is that being adhered to? Because we can do good things in this verbiage with talking about fencing and all this, and then you can put in. Huge headaches that potentially don't even address the concern that's there. And based on topography, I, I don't. I don't know, actually, I've, I've, I've been to a lot of different places that have outdoor speakers and. Ambient music and you can't actually hear it that much further away, um. But again, if it's at midnight, that's rude, right, I mean, that's just, that's just wrong, if it's at four thirty in the afternoon.
I hear Rolling Ridge, I hear Rolling Ridge music at, um, Wednesday nights.
I, I really want, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner, but I really want to separate us from that. We have zero intent of doing any outdoor concerts, live music events where people are congregating. And the music is louder than that, I mean, we're talking about ambient music that is able to be easily spoken. Over during any type of gathering time out there, and then they move inside, and it's done inside. This is, this site isn't even set up to be able to hold a concert of that level.
I'm not talking about concerts, I'm still talking about, and we, and that's gonna be coming up in another, in another one of the things about, you know, about. The sound amplification, things like that, that comes up later.
Yep.
Just a concern we have about that outdoor ceremony space, the noise that can be generated there, whether that can be mitigated so it does not. I don't know if the berm and the vegetation is enough to do it, honestly, I don't know, but just ask me the questions and I'll be.
There are places in our ordinance where we say something about the adjacent residential uses, like, I mean. There's a phrasing that we use in our ordinance that says something about, about that, and I, I. For, wanna be consistent with it, but my, my thought on this one is, you know. The adjacent residential properties to the north, um. Um, adequate, or, well, not adequate, cause that's subjective, but, um. Screening, well, I think the outdoor ceremony space, you know, that's one thing of screening. But I think that entire, kind of the, the facility facing the northern residential properties. Needs to have some sort of screening for noise and light that, you know, consists of trees, shrubs. A combination of trees, shrubs, fencing per ord- you know, per the city ordinance.
That, that's kinda my, if you're gonna, if you follow the noise ordinance, there shouldn't be any issues here, right? I mean, as long as we're following what's stated, in the, I mean, you have the noise ordinance in here, talks about amplified sounds, participation in noisy gatherings. If it becomes an issue, then it needs to be addressed. I think that's, you know, this is, so to me, as long as the noise ordinance is being followed the way it's laid out. You know, is there that big of a concern? I guess, in my, I mean, I understand, you know, hearing noise, and I, and I do hear Rolling Ridge as well, you know, I, I have that area too, and I, but there are outdoor concerts too, where. You know, you state it's not gonna be that way, um, I don't know, to me, as long as noi- noise ordinance is being followed, it should really be a moot point.
Yeah, so, I'm kinda just also trying to type as I'm hearing things as well.
I think when you start saying, you know, any percentage of opaqueness, that becomes difficult, cause you, trees die and. Things change and leaves fall and, you know, it, it gets really tough when you start giving that kind of definition. How long does it take to get to eighty percent, um, that kinda stuff?
Yeah.
Um.
You know, the only thing is, I mean, the, the, the privacy, is it, privacy, is it meant to be privacy, or is it meant to be?
Well, the purpose of, so the purpose of the screening, I think a fence is a different, if, a fence to contain people on the property, I think is a different issue than screenings.
Yeah, I, I think also the thought of the fence too is if you're like at grade level. At the adjacent property, you know, maybe it blocks more of the downward angle that you could see some of the, the sightline. I think that's part of the thought. Um, so I added language in here tied to a year-round living fence, um.
I think living fence has its own definition, and I don't think we talk about living fence in our ordinance, do we?
Um, we do within the fence ordinance, yep, we, um, there are references to that, um, but we also. I try to spell it out here too, living fence shall be accomplished to the trees, shrubs, and a privacy fence.
So, the, so the only thing that I'm just confused on that is, is it just for the ceremony space? Or is it? Where you were saying, I'm on the, right on my border of my property, I'm looking down into everything, I mean, what is it that you're? Because like Ken brought up, there's that area where it's twenty.
That berm extends onto your property.
Berm extends on my property.
And higher spots and, you know, my, my initial thought was, could we extend, you know, could we extend the berm on your property, but then I didn't wanna create. You know, then I'm thinking you're gonna create drainage issues, cause you can't get out from where things currently drain to and that kinda stuff, so I didn't think that made much sense, um. So, I mean, some sort of, I think there's, like I said, I think there's a difference between fence to contain. And, and a fence to screen.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So, should there be two separate, should we, should we address one?
I think we should address, you know, the, um.
Cause I think it's easier, the outdoor spa- ceremony space, we can already put, cause I think that was their intent anyways, was to create some type of screening.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's address that separately, one, and then. Address as needed on the rest, does that make sense?
So, you're talking about, um, address the, the north side of the building and then address the outdoor ceremony space? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like, cause the ceremony space, I think there's, the intent already by, um, Ken and Kristen is to. Screen some of that off, they don't want people wandering around, so there's gonna already be some of that in there. Pretty it up, you know, it's just kind of a grass right now. So there's gonna already be some of that in there, pretty it up, you know, it's just kind of a grass right now, so. But then further along, that, that would be the question is further in the property, from the property area. Is there a requirement to have that fencing further down?
Yeah, I guess what are the commission's thoughts on, on that? You know, uh, is the further extending it further down, is the concern the interior lights and that light projection? Or what would the commission, what would be the reasons on the commission to wanna see the screening further down? Is it, is it the lighting or is it?
The patio was, was, was taken off, your, your patio was removed from the westerns, I guess. It, it was, it was made quite a bit smaller according to your plan, as I, as I thought, right?
Can we state outdoor spaces?
Outdoor spaces?
Yeah.
Shall be screened?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, that's, you're right. The screening show like.
Outdoor spaces used for events or outdoor spaces used by the facility or used. Right?
Okay, so the outdoor spaces, yeah, I, that's a good approach, I think.
So what does that look like when you say that?
Well, like, like you saying they, you know, there was some of the, some of the patio had already been eliminated to reduce. You know, this was at one point patio, that's been reduced. So I would say that that living, or that outdoor space is, you know, that whatever patio is out there, the outdoor ceremony space. You know, parking, well, you know, that covers parking then too will be screened with, so therefore we probably don't wanna say.
So, so parking, uh, wasn't, um, we didn't include parking for screening on there because of the way that it's positioned and the vegetation and that, yeah.
So the outdoor.
So.
Space, the outdoor spaces adjacent to residential uses? Adjacent to residential properties? Or facing on the, I don't know the wording, I mean.
We're gonna make the sentence even longer.
Yeah, I know I am and then, yeah.
Uh, you, you know, uh, I mean, we could just keep outdoor spaces, cause really the only outdoor spaces are the ones that are facing the, the north. That's the concern for the resi-
Facing outdoors spaces?
There you go.
What's that?
The north facing door spaces. But if I turn and face the building, I'm facing south. But no, I think that, yeah. The northern facing, or the north, yeah. Do we need to have a height of, of the fence in there or can we just say a fence? Um, I mean, I, what does our ordinance say or the type of fences?
It's totally up to the commission if you feel there's adequate minimum height. You know, we could say, it's probably best to say a minimum maybe, um, but you don't have to, you can just say.
I think the topography out there makes it really tough to give any sort of height requirement on it. I mean, there are spaces out there that from an aesthetic standpoint and from a purpose standpoint, a simple split rail fence might look best. You know, I mean, just, you know, simple more, I mean, just from, from what's out there, I mean, from a purpose of defining a boundary of the property, you know, defining a boundary or whatever. Um, I don't think we need to specify a six foot privacy fence.
Okay.
I think we can just say fencing.
Well, again, that depends on what your intent is. If it's just for aesthetic purposes, yeah, split rail fence might look great, but if the intent is to absorb sound.
The stuff, the, the living fence is already there, you guys. I, I guess I'm confused. The living fence is there, the trees and everything else is there.
Well, but it's on your prop, the trees are mostly on your property, aren't they?
They're, there's.
I thought that was part of it that we talked about at one point.
On the ceremony space, yes.
Okay.
But when you come wrap around here, this, you can see this part comes down. Now, and I know they wanna try and keep that character of that, that hill there. And there's some trees and they're gonna have to cut some of it down, cause it's in the way. But this, and then this is all.
Vegetated.
I, I, I think it goes, is it the first dip that's in my property or the second one? That go, cuts into the hill, cause there's that dip where the bee eyes were.
It, it would be the next.
The next one, so that's even further, so that's the first one. There you go.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that, that's the one, yeah, but this is, wait, that's the first. Second one, you can't tell, it actually starts to go up way high and then there's the cut into, I mean.
So I think there's a couple of different berm areas we're talking about, so. Um, you know, the berm area by the outdoor ceremony space, the top of that berm does lack vegetation on the top of that one.
But that's what they already planned on doing. You have the, you have another one where it shows that.
Um.
That, this dark black line drawing over.
Footprint.
The topple, cause that one kinda really shows you a little bit better, but.
Nope. There's one with an aerial, I don't know if it was in the packet or if it was.
It was in the old one, maybe?
Or is it in this one again?
I, I just, I think, I don't wanna get caught in the weeds, I just feel like it's just, it's get, on the, on the flip side, I don't wanna say, you know, what happens if it's just. The trees aren't enough and, and visually the light or sound, what is there to be done after the fact? Is my, is my concern, is that then fall under the noise, noise ordinance where they'll say, hey, we'll do, I don't know. I mean.
I don't think, well, okay, I don't think we need the facing north, cause we do talk about it later in this paragraph about the adjacent residential property to the north. So I think we can just say the outdoor spaces.
Fence needs to be in there.
Do we need this language that I added?
I like that, um.
Sorry, actually works.
Through a combination of trees, shrubs and fencing. I mean, cause there may be areas where a fence makes the most sense. I mean, I, I guess is what I'm looking at, you know, if there is a gap, you know, if there are gaps in it and things like that. Um, required by ordinance to limit impacts, so the impacts that we wanna limit with this screening would be noise and, noise and light. So I think we need to state what impacts we wanna limit with the screening.
Okay.
And then that would just fall under the ordinance.
Yep.
We're not getting graded on com, we're not getting graded on commas here, by the way.
Yeah, that's good. It's an ordinance, nobody uses comments in an ordinance.
Put candle thing is, but whatever that.
That's a stand, yeah, that's a standard measure.
Yep.
Um. Screening and, screening shall be of sufficient height and opaqueness sufficient to do what? Um.
To meet the required, where it was.
To meet noise and light impact.
Uh, so, shall be of sufficient height and opaqueness to mitigate, to mitigate. No, we can leave it, it's fine.
Leave it, okay.
Sorry, I get, I get picky on this stuff too. You know, coniferous trees, obviously we want some conifers in there for the year round, but we cover that with the year round and that coniferous. Um.
Cause that, there is not any.
So I think this addresses the noise and light screening a, as best as we can with the information that we have. Um, and some of the other things might be addressed through the times of operation and the amplified sounds and things like that as we go further on in here.
Do we need to say anything about having a solid year-round fence so there's no gaps or does that?
Year-round screening, you do have that.
Yeah, you got year-round living fence.
Okay.
I think that's okay.
Okay.
Or dead, or, or dead fence.
Well, yeah, well.
So.
I, I gotcha.
Are we, are we good with six and the language that's in there?
I think we can address the other things through other parts of this.
Okay.
I think, maybe.
Good.
Um.
Moving on then.
Number seven, the city shall have the right to inspect the premises for compliance and safety purposes at any time upon reasonable request.
Template language.
Number eight, all noise generated by the facility shall meet the city noise, noise ordinance. Um, that was one thing I noticed in the rural residential district, they talk about something about. Not necessarily needing to meet some of those noise requirements, so I like that we're specifying that. Do we need to specify what the ordinance number is?
No, no, cause that could always change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, any amplified sound music shall be inside of an enclosed building. Sound amplification systems like speakers and similar devices shall not be allowed to be placed. Or generated outside of an enclosed structure, except when a ceremony is occurring, then speakers or similar devices may be used to conduct the ceremony proceedings. Any noise during a ceremony shall still meet the city noise ordinance.
This is another tough one to kind of define.
Yeah. I, what, what kinda seating are you guys thinking about putting in the outdoor space? Like, is this permanent bench style seat, the way it looks on the picture, it looks like it's?
Yeah, the hope is permanent, whether it's a, a stone or a composite, something that's easy to clean, something that's, you just leave it out there. Bench style, not moving in and out, not chairs, you're just going in and bringing it back out. Not, not reconfigurable, it is those benches that are there. I would say the only chairs that may be moved in and out would be, um, in that, call it half moon seating. Those first two levels generally. If they, if they want anybody there, if it's a smaller ceremony, they may actually be facing the building and utilizing that. In, in that case, we might bring out some chairs for that, cause those would not be permanent in the plan, but.
I'm assuming that the speaker configuration that you'd wanna use for your ceremonies would be. Speakers up at the front facing back toward the building so that the people would be able to hear, what's going on as opposed to coming from the back toward the front?
Uh, the depth of the audio conversation that we've had so far is that speaker configuration, most everything would be pointing to the east. Pointing towards Jade Road. So they would not be hypothetically mounted on the building pointing toward the berm.
Yeah, what I was thinking was small, like, like small speaker stands, a little, that would have speaker kind of on the top of them, could blend in with everything, it'd be almost unnoticeable.
Um, it, I would say that it would be more, not to say permanently mounted, cause nothing's truly permanent in audio visual. But if there are posts out there, they would be affixed to those posts, so they would be blended in. I mean, you're not talking about DJ speakers that are carried in, right? You're talking about much smaller ones that are really.
Little speakers like this and they could be directional, so they're very directional, point back toward the specific area so that.
Yeah, the audio visual plan would be very well thought out acoustically to say, how are we covering the area that we are having? Again, without impeding, we don't want to send noise directly to the northwest, right? We want to send it to the east, but yet have proper coverage for those in attendance. So. To make, as long as the, the verbiage is in it that it meets the city noise ordinance and that's being followed, I don't know, I mean.
Well, I, I think the, the, the two hundred people or however that, what does it hold roughly, you're hoping, two fifty? Yeah, I mean, that, so here's what I think, well, like, when you get.
Yeah, so two fifty and below, the numbers that are there are like absolutely right, so two fifty and below is the threshold of what we're trying to actually create a facility for.
I mean, the reason why then that amplified music is sound is needed, because of that many people. Um, and having been to other places and, and gone through that, right? They say, well, we have this available, this room can hold fifty, this room can hold two fifty. You know, when you go to different event venues, they have different spaces for different number of people. I almost feel like that the more people you have outside, this is why the problem is happening with all the, th- this is what's creating all the problem. Is the big, uh, outdoor space. And I would like to propose that that space be reduced with the number of guests. Because you, the less people, I mean, you, you don't need amplified sound. I get there's some music you can have, but that's different when you can put on a little music for.
So I was actually at a wedding this weekend with a very similar setup, there was maybe a hundred and fifty people there. You ever remember in a wedding, people are very respectful of the environment and what's going on, people are not shouting. Shouting beforehand and shouting after, maybe some woohoo's, congratulations. A ceremony, when you're talking about the sound that's coming from a ceremony in an outdoor setting, they will be there. Do the ceremony, it's loud enough so people can hear, but if you step further back, you're not gonna hear it anyways. So it's like, I just, I'm having a hard time with this, cause it's, I understand the concern, but it's also, I feel, a non-issue. Because when, if the ceremony is over, people are gonna move indoors. Maybe that's where we talk about if it's a sound issue on the inside, maybe they could put up some like decorative acoustic panels on the interior part.
Yeah, but if you think about a nice day, even a fall day, people aren't, you can't force people to go inside.
Well, even, even the non-smokers take smoke breaks.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the whole intent is that this is enjoying nature. So then going back and looking at outdoor ceremony should not be used between nine PM to seven AM. Well, nine PM is pretty late, because now that all of a sudden is, you're, you have people out there, you know, that, this was new to me that this was put on there. So, um, I think that's a late time, um, for the outdoor ceremony, but. So it's give and take, have a big space for a lot of people, but then can we at least limit the time of operation out there to help with the noise? Not have nine, so, you know, outdoors, outdoor ceremony and that type of stuff has to be. And by like seven PM or something, that instead of nine, that way. People will grab, move in instead of being.
I think, so the, so the issue with the noise out on the outside areas is more so not necessarily the noise that occurs. During the quote-unquote ceremony, it would be the party extending outside beyond the twenty-five minute service, is that, I mean?
Yeah, cause I don't think the inside, I think just basic, the conversations I had with them, the windows aren't opening windows, they're not.
It's a building, it's, yeah, it's inside, you're indoors.
Inside, you're, you're, the sound.
So I think, you know, I think. You know, my, my first thought was, you know, it's in a residential area, there should be no amplified music outside, no amplified sound outside, was my first, my first gut shot on this one. Then you start talking, well, then you can't hear, but what if you can't hear the officiant who's doing this, you know, who's performing the service? Well, okay, so you mic the officiant, but you still have to meet the noise ordinance. But then you're gonna want music, and so if you've got a little string quartet, or you know, if you've got a violin player, are you gonna be able to, you know, kind of a thing? Do you want them amplified and mic, you know, do you want mics on that? So where do you, I don't know where makes sense to draw that, I think. Um. And with, with technology changing, I mean, your audio equipment is gonna change. I mean, we've gone from, you know, speakers to speakers. I mean, there's, there's a lot of change that happens and it happens quickly. So to say that, you know, one set of, you know, to say that the speakers are intended to do this is, you know, you can't go down that road, I don't think. I'm kind of talking in circles here, so I know that I haven't said anything conclusive, um.
Well, I don't, I, I get that, I get, okay, so I get the, the, the need for that. I, I get the need for that when you have two hundred fifty people. You won't be able to hear anything being going on. I mean, so I mean it. And it's not five hours worth of.
You're gonna have the loud truck, you're gonna have a loud truck driving down the freeway that's gonna honk their horn, cause there's a deer running by.
It's an hour intermittent, I get that. But I think that on the opposite end, the hours of outdoor ceremony space. Is that, is that in conjunction with then being able to use the outdoor amplified sound? You know, because we talked about the outdoor ceremony space itself. Could possibly be, I mean, you can't, like I said, you can't shut, you know, you, you could, you know, nine PM is technically, you know, sunset time. People might be out there, but does it have to be tied to the sound? Or can you put in there this, that the ceremony that, ha, by seven o'clock or something, that, that ceremony outdoor amplified sound has to be?
I feel like at that point, you're kind of impeding on their business and operation point, because there are people that like to get married at sunset when.
That's true, but they also still have to follow the noise ordinance, so if it's, if it is.
Right, so if they're following the or, noise ordinance, I don't see the issue, because it's the noise ordinance.
But we don't know, I don't know how loud it's gonna be, so what happens, so what happens if it's?
Right, if they're, but if they're impeding that noise ordinance, then they're not following that.
Any ceremony that I've been for weddings is, uh, quiet, respectful, uh, kinda, it's kinda like going to church on Sunday.
Well.
And that's how it is, that's the noise level.
Well, okay, that's your experience, but. Well, okay, that's your experience, but that's not most. But, what, so what are you, what are you trying to say?
I think it's fine as is, I mean.
No, but I mean, what are you trying to say, that if it doesn't impede on the noise ordinance, how do you know it's not gonna impede on the noise?
Well, but if it, if it does, then there's a violation.
And somebody's gotta enforce it, and that's a whole nother issue.
Right.
I mean, but that's a whole nother issue with all of these conditions in reality.
Correct, yep, that's correct, yep.
I mean, all noise generated by the facility shall meet the city noise ordinance, that's a given, I don't think there's anything that we can, that's, it's gotta be that, um.
Number ten addresses the timeframe.
Right, um. I like the, I mean, I.
Yeah, well, you're only allowing the amplified during the ceremonies too, and that's minimal, as long as they're meeting the city noise ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Cause it says in there, except when the ceremony is occurring, or then speakers or similar devices may be used to conduct ceremony proceedings, so, we're only talking about amplified.
We're not talking, they're not gonna have music piped out there during social cocktail hour.
And as long as they meet that noise ordinance.
Then you're gonna have elevator music in the background.
Um, so do we, do we get rid of the purple or red or whatever that color is?
I think you leave that, I say you leave it as is.
The, yeah, the purple, uh, just highlighted that, cause the applicant had a little concern on some of the language tied to speakers. And and such in there, so that's why that's highlighted, but that was included as the original.
Okay. I, I'm good with leaving, leaving it as is, um, because I do like, except when, I mean, I like that limiting it to the ceremony proceedings. I think that meets kind of what the intent of limiting the concerns are.
Person wouldn't expect it to be three hours long.
Right.
And if, you know, we get a call, when we get, if a complaint comes in, it's gonna often happen off hours, right?
Yep.
So, when the police go out there, you know, if they observe that a ceremony is not occurring or something else, like. A live concert or something, you know, they'll be able to mark that down and document, so I think it's enforceable in that sense.
Yep, um, the city's liquor ordinance shall be met, yeah, oh, sorry, did you, I, did you have something you wanted to?
Part of the, the ceremony, I, I think Nate and I had a, and we had a hard time defining this, because that social hour. Um, is that part of the ceremony, is that not part of the ceremony, so realistically. When we use a speaker outside during social hour, keep in mind it's ambient table music, we need to be able to speak over it. But that's just that transition point of, I guess, further defining what does ceremony mean? Does that mean the eight minutes or a hundred and twelve minutes or?
I'm sorry, how many tables are you gonna have outside, we talked about that at the last meeting, and I thought you indicated that. Just in that little patio space, you might have some high top tables with some chairs, but not the whole two hundred and fifty people outside.
Yeah, it's on, like, it's, it's the transition of people back and forth, but again, um.
Prior to dinner, after ceremony.
After ceremony, prior to dinner, you may have bride and groom and entire bridal party off taking photos for forty-five minutes. Are, is there speakers able to be used to, again, just put in? What we would consider table music, it's not piping loud, it's able to be talked over. That's the type of stuff that we look at this and say, okay, during that cer- what does ceremony define?
And that's a good, that's a good point, cause I would consider that not part of ceremony.
Right.
And that's the concern with saying just during ceremony is. Can you have that during that social hour before dinner, where everybody is then moving inside? Cause nobody's gonna miss dinner after being outside.
I, I also believe in your packet, it's, I, there are three sample layouts of how a day might look. Within that, it does highlight when that space would be used, um, every wedding day is unique. And so, there are times where it won't be used at all, there'd be, there would be times where it would be a ceremony and a social hour. Um, I do anticipate people going inside and outside during that, um, but that, that might be helpful. It's not, I don't feel like it's ever an extended period of time, and yes, it's really important that everybody is able to talk. I, I don't know any other way to even have soft music playing without. Even if it was a small speaker, I don't know how else to do that, and you're saying that absolutely.
Like come ceremony completion, like, no speakers, so.
That does begin to affect business.
My concern is that it, it can tend to be a slippery slope, if you've got the, the amplification during the ceremony, just for the ceremony, I get that. Very respectful, quiet, most weddings are like that, but I also know that once, once the ceremony is done. Okay, everybody boohas, cheers, great, and then they're transitioning back and forth, that gets to be noisy. And if you've got amplified music, where does it stop? You turn it up a little bit, turn it up a little more, people have a couple drinks, they're transitioning and getting to the dinner. With thirty-five, forty-five, fifty minutes while somebody's out taking photographs and, and it becomes a little more raucous. Does the music go off with it, um, so I, I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying, no, it's not.
Somebody else is controlling that music and is paid to control that music, right? So, they're under contract to strictly adhere to things, just like saying, well, you can have liquor there, but what if they serve a minor, I mean, that's.
Well, they're giving.
They're crossing boundaries, they're crossing lines.
Somebody has to come and enforce it, cause I, even though you may say, this isn't going to happen, I've been told that before, this isn't going to happen. And a year later, guess what?
Well, and we're, and we're putting our entire business on the line, if all of a sudden there's a hundred complaints in there, or twenty complaints, whatever that number is. I mean, you don't throw away your business because somebody wants to have a little bit louder music, you tell them. No, and, and it's still in a timeline that is respectful, we're not talking about ten o'clock at night having a social hour. Right, we're not asking for that.
This is going to be based on the time that we got into the ten coming up.
Yeah, that's, that's why that, you know, I looked at your samples, and that's why I was curious. Where it says outdoor ceremony space should not be used between the hour of nine PM and then even ten PM Friday and Saturday. That seems to me excessive when the examples you are giving us saying, nope, people are moving in. You know, at five forty-five or five thirty, yeah, it's kinda like, okay, but there has to be a line drawn. Because if these are the examples, you guys have a schedule to keep, if you aren't able to get people in, that just means they're lounging around, you're not able to. Get the service done, so, I feel, I guess that to me seems excessive, because now it's just opening that. Well, it's during ceremony space, you know, that we can have that, I just feel there has to be something changed in that. Number ten.
So what do you suggest?
Well, what, what were you guys' se- mind, what was your thought on that, why would you have to have that in?
You got the opinion there, I'd like to see what's your suggestion for the, uh, special use.
For the time, for the outdoor ceremony, yeah, cause it's a ceremony for a wedding, right, that's where that ceremony space is.
Suggest a reasonable timeframe then for.
I, I actually think that based on the, this, what you've been providing here, I mean, six o'clock. Um, doesn't look like that it's gonna be beyond that time to get the wedding to go through, otherwise you guys are not on time, on that.
Again, those are just examples, I mean, if someone wants to get married at sunset, they're then gonna have a later wedding. And then it's gonna take some time for somebody to get inside, I mean, they're still, as long as they're not outside of that noise ordinance, I. Cause when you start limiting more than that, you are in, potentially impeding their business.
But this is also ordinance for rural residential, that's what we're trying to understand too, that we're.
I understand that, but again, city noise ordinance is in place for a reason, and it is enforced.
So, it might, it might be easiest if, if the commission has, so I'm hearing different.
Rural residential.
Of, in the city though.
So, I'm hearing different opinions on the outdoor ceremony space and the hours, so it might be easiest to just, you know, ask the commission. You know, who's i- in favor of the hours that are listed now, and who may be in favor of changing those said hours. So, you know, I guess who, who's okay with the ord- or the hours that we have listed, and where those hours came in is. We were just kind of taking, um, the noise ordinance and kind of the common hours that was laid out in there. Now, that can vary based on types of noise and things like that, but that's where the starting point was, so, you know, that might be easier to structure the.
I would rather see the, say, the outdoor spaces shall not be used between the hours of.
Okay.
I, I know that's hard.
Thoughts from the other commission members on that?
How are you gonna enforce that?
Well.
I mean, outdoor spaces, I go to a wedding.
Yeah, I know, you, you're right, you can't do that.
No, ceremony is not always there.
They're just gonna be out front on the front, on the front door instead and.
Or the non-smokers taking a break.
Right, yeah, no, my, my biggest concern with the times, it's not necessarily the ending times, I mean, I don't, I think. Ten PM Friday and Saturday, I, I get it, I'd love to see it earlier, because it is in a residential area. My concern comes in with that seven AM Sunday through Thursday with the school conflicts, the school day there is from seven thirty to two. So. I, I struggle a little bit with weekday things before, um, you know, before eight in the morning. Um, and I, you know, some of the other things with, with going with the timelines, when you're looking at timing of things. I was wondering if we have the ability to define event hours versus in-loading and off-loading hours, um. You know, saying that event hours Monday through Friday are between three and nine or three and ten. Because the concern of people, you know, showing up to do hair and taking pictures early. Not that great, not that big of a deal, um, no deliveries on Monday through Friday prior to the hour of eight AM. Because of school.
So you're talking more like limiting some business hour during like Monday through Thursday type thing?
You know, I guess, yeah, I, I was looking at it more, can we, can we define? Does it, does it serve a better purpose for us in terms of coming up with some of these conditions by defining event hours? Um. I don't, and maybe I'm compli- or complicating it more than I need to be, but I have some concerns, and I think the school district has voiced those concerns. And I think the commission has voiced some concerns with the school traffic and impacting that, um. I got married on a Friday in the afternoon, I get it, I mean, three o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday is not unheard of. You know, but if I've got people, you know, if I've got school closings and coming ins, people are gonna, so I guess I'm.
So the hours of operation, what are we looking at, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm struggling with that one.
So, what do you, have you thought about that?
Yep, I have, I honestly think their Friday through Sunday is not unreasonable, it's very common. But I would think Monday through Thursday, eight AM to nine PM would be more than reasonable, because you're not. You don't have a ton of events, like wedding events going on Monday through Thursday, I mean. Other events maybe, but that's where I feel like eight AM to nine PM wouldn't be unreasonable Monday through Thursday.
No, I put Thursday, cause I think some people do Thursday evening, I think that Thursday. To Sunday, you had Sunday in there?
I had Friday through Sunday as is.
I'm, I'm not accommodated as the public, I'm just, you know, what's reasonable?
Well, so, the, the six, I think the time, again, six AM is, right, there's sta- there's vendors, I don't think that it's. That's an issue, yeah, yeah.
Necessarily, it's.
And I think that if they wanna operate and have some, that ability to operate. Um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, the full time, I think that having it at a appropriate time. So that it's open for events, not just weddings, um, I've kind of done many go-arounds. So, that, that doesn't matter, but the weekend, I kinda looked at Thursday to Sunday, six AM to midnight. I know that there's a lot of venues that, I mean, one AM is kind of a, kind of, I mean, that's.
I looked at, I looked at nothing going past ten, to be honest, when I was looking at this, I mean, I think, you know, music for Joe Town ends at ten, I believe. Uh, I mean, there's fireworks and stuff like that going on after it, um, ten o'clock is not an uncommon ending thing. Uh, campgrounds, ten o'clock quiet hours is pretty common, so I looked at it and said nothing. Especially nothing outdoors after ten o'clock.
Yeah, and I think right now, if it goes, if there's an event that goes past ten PM, I believe that would trigger then. A request to the council to go past the noise ordinance.
I think we did that with Rocktober Fest in the past.
Yeah, like Law Jam this past weekend, I think, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think, I don't think there's any reason to have anything, well, anything outside past ten, for sure. Any day of the week, um.
And do we have, I mean, I even put like midweek events, cause of the school, do, I mean. You know, there's a period where you don't wanna deal with traffic, but I almost feel like, do we wanna have to get into that detail, otherwise let that be.
And I think we have to, keep in mind too, that, uh, if that outside space is restricted during the day too. They still have the ability to do the inside space, so there's still gonna be the traffic and the potential, you know, conflicts from that.
I guess essentially this is what it's saying, this is the outdoor ceremony space should not be used between the hours of nine PM, seven AM, Sunday through Thursday. And then ten PM to seven PM, or seven AM, Friday through Saturday, isn't that basically saying by ten o'clock, everything shut down outside?
Yeah, I'd like to change it to eight AM, personally, well, but then you're missing the su- you're missing the early morning sunrisey type stuff possibly, I don't know.
So, and, and that's, I mean, honestly, if we look at sunrise and sunset and season and all this, it gets fairly convoluted. Right, I mean, how do you actually define all of that, and I mean, sunrise can be four forty-five, right, I'd ride my bike out there. Watch the sunrise real bright and early.
Yep.
Um, I think those things come down to, I, I'm assuming those are special requests, right? To go outside of these operating hours, to come in and say, we had somebody ask six months out or eight months out, they want a sunrise service on this time. Or whatever that process is, um, and keep in mind our busiest season, the summer season, school is not in session. Right, so, we don't have a lot of impact within that timeframe either.
I know that, uh, Bob, you were probably on the council when, with, uh, Rolling Bridge where. There was a lot of restrictions put on until they, the comfort level of, hey, what is our decisions may be made. Makes sense, then later on, there was changes, I mean, that, that I, like, there was a restriction of only, I believe, May to October. Was, uh, operating months.
I don't recall all the.
There were some, yeah, I think there were some seasonal things, I think there were, well.
It wasn't.
Yeah.
There were a few, if I'm not mistaken, but regardless.
Operate, yeah, it was only like.
I mean.
Yeah, there was restrictions on the months, I believe, and then there was a amendment to that CUP. I, I don't know the time on how, yeah.
Once they kinda got, okay, hey, this is.
Well, and once they get what their business model is, and if you're, if you're discovering that you've got all these requests for morning things, or all these requests for later night things.
So that's my thing, it's like, can't, can't, this type of stuff can be addressed later on. If all of a sudden, hey, it's working, there's not a problem, so my question is, is why, why? Give it the, the blue sky right now, because we're only gonna make it a problem, versus you can't go back.
Cause if you leave it as is now, you, if there is a problem, it'll be addressed through the ordinance. That's why you have an ordinance, and that's why you're stating in here multiple times, follow the city noise ordinance, follow the city ordinance.
Well, but you proposed hours till nine.
Monday through Thursday, I mean, I don't disagree with that, but I mean. That again was like Monday, not Sunday, I mean. And my thought on that was more if we have an issue with the hours, not necessarily an issue with outdoor ceremony space.
Yeah, I think we're talking two different things here, right?
I'm not talking about the outdoor cer- I'm talking about our, our, our operation.
So I think we're talking two different things.
I'm sorry, yep.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I mean, the question is, what we have right now in here for the outside, outdoor ceremony space. Is the commission okay with that, or not okay with that? I think, you know, if there's other viewpoints, maybe we just take a, take a vote on who's okay with it, or who's not.
I'm okay with it, as, as is stated in number ten, with the outdoor ceremony spaces.
I'd like to see it changed.
To what?
What?
Um. During the eight o'clock, actually seven o'clock Sunday to Thursday, and nine o'clock on Friday and Saturday.
And for what reason, cause rather than the reason why the hours should be changed on the one, from the ones that are presented.
Well, because of the, the noise, first of all.
Well, you're anticipating noise that we don't know.
Such as, I go back to, Bob, just as, did I go back to how it was looked at with Rolling Ridge?
Rolling Ridge has nothing to do with this.
Absolutely it does, this is, it's, this is in fact trying to figure out. What type of noise considerations we're dealing with here and time of operation.
I have not heard of any noise complaints from out there, and I've been to weddings out there that are fairly noisy. In the, after ceremony hours.
I'm just saying, when they first looked at it, there was tighter restrictions, then they, you came back and said, hey. Can I now open this up, and it was after the the planning commission and the city council looked at it, said, yep, it's not a, it hasn't been a problem, it's moved forward with it.
I don't recall them coming back and opening up anything.
Yep.
At the council level.
Yep.
And maybe it was handled administratively, I don't know.
So, I'm hearing one for, one against, um, I like to hear the other commissions, cause if their majority is to change it. Then we can talk about what those hours should be.
I, I would like to see some adjustment to it, I'm okay with the ending times, I'd like to see the starting times at eight. Um, to facilitate school traffic Monday through Friday during the school, school year. I mean, so I'd rather just leave it at eight AM, I mean, I think that's a reasonable hour.
On on the, on the, uh, morning hours to accommodate the, uh, traffic concerns for the schools.
School and morning commute type stuff, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you're, I'd like to see eight AM as a starting point.
Like to see the traffic counts on those roads at, you know, but.
I could go sit there and count cars, that's a fun job. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, APL will throw, throw the, throw the stripes out there.
Yep, but yeah, I guess I, I'm okay, I like the ending times, I'd like to see eight AM as a starting, all, seven days a week.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, other thoughts?
I'm okay with that.
Eight AM?
Eight AM is a starting time and nine, ten is.
What time does school start?
Seven thirty.
Cause I'm just thinking, wouldn't eight AM actually impede more because you have people coming in beforehand? Versus seven AM, you have people coming in before, cause they're not showing up at seven o'clock, right, so if we say you can have a seven AM. Then they're starting to show up six thirty, six forty-five versus the flip side.
Well, they start from six AM beyond, so it could show up anytime.
Look at that during school year, just a thought, that that may actually push that traffic mode.
And I mean, again, we're talking about just the outside ceremony space, so, you know, if the facility is being used on the interior, they can show up. At any time as it's written now.
I don't know why we're looking at that line, that doesn't mean, yeah, it doesn't matter, the cer- outdoor ceremony spaces. That's pointless, this is the hour, we're looking, we're talking like hours of operation versus outdoor ceremony space.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
There's two different things that we're talking about.
Yep.
Right. So the outside ceremony space, I heard a couple of that, they're okay, a concern from one, other thoughts?
Concerned at the time that it starts, the PM time, I don't, that's seven AM, it doesn't bother me.
Okay, what are thoughts from other commission members?
For outdoor ceremony space?
Correct.
Right.
Whatever, I guess, I don't wanna see anything past ten, so I'm good.
Okay. Uh, Mark, Bob, Isabella?
I'm just saying, as far as the outdoor ceremony space is concerned, I think the hours that, you know, shut down at nine o'clock, you know, during the weekend, ten o'clock on weekends is fine.
Okay.
And I would, I would predict that there aren't many ceremonies that are gonna go that late or start, I mean, very rare, I, that'd be a rarity.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like.
City's liquor ordinance, is there anything about serving, having a bar outside, an outdoor serving?
Um, so if they serve, uh, if they were to have outside, um. I know that there is some restrictions tied to having an enclosed area outside, I'm not sure what the trigger points, if it's. You know, I think it's, if it is served outdoors, I'm not sure though, I'd have to check with the clerk on. What would trigger the site to be enclosed where alcohol is being served. I think if it's, if they can get a drink and be served out there, then it has to be enclosed, so think about like your patio spaces at like Bad Habit, enclosed. Uh, Bella, enclosed, um, I just, I'm not, it's a little gray, I'm not sure, it's not, what I work with.
They have their license for the building and, uh, they're proposing or they're gonna be operating under caterers licenses, I assume. From what you told, we, way to beginning, you were planning on getting.
Intention of providing, uh, food or liquor services personally, so that would be provided through whatever caterer's license or. Person doing liquor would be hired, uh, to do. Um, that would be interesting to explore what enclosed means, because in the current design, we have, you know, a window where somebody could walk up and.
I think it's onsite sale, and then it depends on where it's being served at, but I can clarify and check with the clerk who works with that ordinance. Yeah, um, but going back, so the, the hours of outside ceremony space, I heard a majority that are okay with it, I heard one concern. Um, can we move to the next one? Okay.
Uh, any large gatherings of or events of fifty people or more shall be restricted to private events. Um, I'm curious where the number fifty came from.
So, it's not a magical number by any means, um, I guess just the thought was, uh, we wanted to put some restriction on if they wanted to do. A quote unquote, um, public type of event that we're not having, that the use is not gravitating towards something.
Towards, towards public events.
Yeah, yep, where, yeah, anyone's invited and all that, and that's not my understanding with discussions with applicant on what they wanna do by any means. Um, and even some of the others, maybe smaller types of things that they would have on the site, um, I know like pollinator habitat stuff was talked about. Where maybe there's a partnership with the school district and a class comes out, that would still be a private event where, you know, they would know ahead of time.
There's a use agreement of some sort, that goes on whether it's a verbal thing or it's a, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can there be language that goes in there that just says no public events, that they're all private events?
If the, if that's the consensus of the commission, you could, yeah.
That was my preference or my original thought.
Yeah.
Was your intent anyway, right, mostly private wedding type thing?
Yeah, generally speaking, everything would be contracted, so to speak, or agreed upon, so to speak. The only thing that I guess is kind of coming up is, let's say we held an open house for photographers to come out. And enjoy the space, right, you may not be, like, we're opening the facility, we don't anticipate more than a dozen people to come out there. Throughout the day, um, but it's not, you know, and that, that's where we kind of said, well, yeah, I mean, fifty people. We are not intended on doing a ticketed event where, hey, anybody can drive in from wherever and just show up to anything. But we could see something like that, an open house could really be construed as some.
Well, but you've got open house to the public to a certain point where you wanna bring potential brides in to see your facility and things like that. And it makes more sense to do that on a given day rather than ninety-five times by appointment kind of a deal. Um.
Or, or if you do a specific invite, you may miss a good number of people that you just didn't have contact information for. So you could say, hey, I'm, you know, Saturday, July third, we're just gonna have an open house and you can come see the grounds. Um, it's really the only thing I can come up with thinking of.
It's really the only thing I was thinking of that wouldn't be a contracted thing, really.
I classify that as a business meeting.
Well, yeah.
Right, well, and.
Well, but then some of the other large, large things could be classified as that too, I mean, you could have a hundred people at a business meeting, but I, I think I'm okay with the language as it is here. Um, I think it meets the intent of both the applicant and, and our desires. Anybody disagree strongly? Okay, um, number twelve, the proposed accessory structure shall be limited to storage related uses only.
Do we just have maintenance, right, maintenance and storage, cause we don't wanna just put stuff in the room, we wanna be able to maintain them, and I think that. Changes things just slightly.
And, and I think as long as it's still an accessory building, you know, that's really the intent of that language, you know, storage or accessory related uses.
How does that relate to bringing utilities to it though? Are you planning on bringing utilities then down to that storage building or accessory building now you're calling it, or?
Bringing utilities down.
Water, sewer.
Yeah, so conversation with staff and, um, not inspector, but.
Engineer alter.
Mike's, uh, title.
Uh, building official?
Yeah, building official. Realistically, the limited use of utilities in there would be like, maybe a half bath, maybe a pressure washer hookup. So we would really like to tap into well and a holding tank with that, bringing water and sewer all the way down there for. Really, really minimal use would far outweigh the cost of any structure that you could actually put up there.
Do that though, can you?
What's that?
Put a well, after the use of it now, you have to.
Um, in rural residential, we do have flexibility where if utilities aren't readily available, where they do have the option.
But it, but it's still gonna be almost eight hundred feet away.
Well.
So that's where we, uh, and that's where the conversations have evolved, accessible, right, what is it? And we've said, yeah, if we're putting up a house down there, of course, you have to run water and sewer down there, cause your usage is so much greater. Um, this would be similar to tapping in a, um, irrigation well, right, to actually irrigate the property. Um, we would just connect to that line, so there could be, and this is discussion.
It's, it's, so.
Like, like, that, that's just, I want the best of both worlds, I want, I need to bring in sewer water for the building, but I don't wanna bring it to my accessory. Cause I wanna put in a well to save money on irrigating the property.
So, I think the conversation really is tied to the development agreement and what's in that, and how we have structured the required utility extensions. And the council would need to weigh in on that piece of it, because it's part of the development agreement, unless the. Commission feels that there is a concern that impacts the public interest, you know, um. I would caution, you know, putting a re- a restriction or language tied to that accessory, I think that's the conversation the council has to.
Yeah.
Decide.
Can we do some language that? Um. Ties the use of the accessory structure to the primary facility on the site? That's a very, I mean, is there, I, I guess, this is a bigger question, is there a way to have more than one use on a parcel this large?
Um, no, so I mean, regardless, the accessory building would have to be tied to the principal in some way, some fashion, whether that's storage, that's maintenance. Um, if there was a proposal to do any other kind of thing, like if it's like a home occupation type of use. Then that would trigger whatever those requirements may be, um, so there would still be, uh, within our ordinance limitations on what they can and can't do. Um, with that accessory building regardless.
Two other things that, that just occurred that, that we talked about actually at the last meeting that we mentioned, and one of them is. The building setback is supposed to be behind the sightline from the front of.
Nope, nope.
No, I, yeah.
Township, that was when I was township, we had that.
Yeah, so the rural residential.
Rural residential, you can actually have your own building.
Rural residential exempts the typical standards of our accessory buildings ordinance, um, we have, yep.
What about the architectural standards as far as?
That's still in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Similar materials and things like that is still in the ordinance, I think.
Yeah, um.
I think the height is different.
So, yeah, if I could, I wish I could pull it up.
Are you looking for the rural residential zoning district?
Yeah.
I've got that right here, um.
As long as they follow the ordinances that are already spelled out, then that's fine.
Yeah, I lost it now. Only got one page. Permitted accessory buildings, um, detached accessory buildings on residential properties are exempt from section five oh two twelve subdivision one of this ordinance. But they shall meet the following, the size, well, that doesn't pertain to this one, um, the same or similar exterior building materials such as siding. And shingles shall be used on the accessory building as the principal building and residential subdivisions, this is in a resident, it's a zoned residential regardless. So that's the same thing, um, no detached accessory building or structure which shall be constructed on any lot prior to the time of construction of the principal building. And detached accessory buildings excluding agricultural buildings shall not exceed twenty feet in height in residential subdivisions. So that's straight from the rural residential zoning ordinance, sub- subdivision seven.
So the one caveat to that is, um, when we reference residential subdivisions, so technically. This isn't a subdivision, cause it's a meet and bounds.
But it's a residentially zoned property, which I would put it in a similar.
So.
I, I maybe.
Yeah, so I, 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 so my, my perspective, um, from a zoning element is. Uh, when we were talking about residential subdivisions, we're talking about areas that have been platted as and subdivided as such. Um, so areas that are meets and bounds, that are existing as is, would, uh, technically, from my interpretation, not constitute a subdivision.
Okay, so then I think we need to state something about the, the exterior building materials, um, for the accessory building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, basically restating, I mean, restating that, you know, the same or similar exterior building materials such as siding and shingles. Shall be used on the accessory building as a principal building, just get rid of the in residential subdivisions. Um, I think that's important, especially since it is right in front along the roadway, um. I don't know, and I guess I don't, I don't know that we need to do anything with the height necessarily, but I guess.
I have a question, if they were to do well and septic at that, so. At the point then of someone, say, developing the property south of, since normally that is extended through your property line, who would be responsible for that?
Um, yeah, so if the property to the south were to subdivide, then they'd have to grab a hold of wherever those utilities are and then extend them to service their subdivision.
So that would then be the responsibility of the new.
The developer, yep.
Of the next parcel.
Yep, correct, whoever's the proposed, uh, developer, yep. Um, other thoughts on, on the commission in regards to ensuring the accessory building is similar in materials and, and such? Cause the commission does have the ability to put more restriction, more restrictive conditions on there, if that's the consensus.
I do think that the building should be similar in materials, and I do like how it's worded now, it should be limited to storage and related uses. And other accessory, if that then, yeah, but I, yeah, I can't personally get behind the well and septic on it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we had one of our site plans straight on, it said no utilities will be needed. I, I, not that that necessarily matters, but I think that the utility thing is probably for another discussion. Cause I don't know that you're gonna get the approval from Stearns County to put a well and septic on it. Without, you know, I don't, I don't know for sure, but that would be one of my concerns when that part comes through.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the proposed accessory structure shall be limited to storage related uses only. Um, I think in this one, we say, we say the same or similar exterior building materials such as siding and shingles shall be used on the accessory building as the principal building. Any objections to that? No.
That makes sense to me, I think, yeah.
So how I have it, uh, wrote, written there, is that the consensus for the language?
Well, why don't we just use the same language that's in the rural residential zoning district, but just get rid of that in residential subdivisions?
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, why not be consistent?
Yep. Okay.
And I think you're covered by, I mean, with their storage related uses, I think further in that permitted accessory buildings, it talks about operation and storage of vehicles, machinery and equipment. Which is incidental to permitted or special uses allowed in this district, so I think you're covered with maintenance and of the equipment and things like that as needed. So I don't think we need to address anything further there.
Okay, instead of writing the whole thing, I'm just gonna quote, quote subdivision seven, two.
Excluding, yeah.
Yeah.
See if you use blue, you could just cut and paste it and.
Yep.
Sorry.
No.
Everything, nothing opens up on my work computer either, by the way.
Don't you love that?
I'm like, no!
Yeah, and the connection in here is always spotty for accessing files and stuff for whatever reason, so.
All right, so is there anything else on number twelve, this proposed accessory structure? Are we good with? Alright, so is there anything else on number twelve, this proposed accessory structure? Are we good with that one? We're good with that one. Number thirteen, revocation, that's just standard language.
Correct.
Uh number fourteen, expiration is also just standard language.
Yeah.
Spires within a year if nothing.
And that's really if no progress has been made. So that, you know, if they've, you know, updated us or submitted any kind of plans or that, as long as things are moving forward. You know, that's what we would look at.
Um number fifteen, if any changes occur, the applicant shall seek an amendment to this conditional use permit. Um then we go on to say this includes, but is not limited to adding a bridegroom overnight room or any lodging additions to the facility or property. Utilization of any accessory building for wedding event-related uses. Um a building expansion of over twenty-five percent, holding large events, gatherings of fifty or more people which are open to the general public. Or other significant changes as determined by the zoning administrator and planning commission. I think all that extra stuff perhaps isn't needed. Um if any changes occur, the applicant shall seek an amendment to this conditional use permit. Um. If your zoning ordinance says what your uses are.
Mm-hmm.
W- whether they're conditional or permitted or special use, do we need to specify? And.
Not necessary, no.
So if there were to add, say, for example, they were proposing to add a bride and groom overnight suite or something like that. They would have. I mean, technically, they'd have to amend the CUP regardless, right? Because it's a different use and would that be considered a bed and breakfast which is an allowed use? Perhaps, maybe, maybe not.
Yep.
You know, kind of a thing, so I I.
Good point.
My thought was is is we can eliminate anything other than the first sentence of number fifteen.
Is there indication that that may happen in the future?
Um not from my understanding. Um I guess that we were just putting the in there as sample kind of in case type of language. But yeah, I mean, our ordinance would cover, would cover these things, so.
I mean, I I I understand the idea to try to kind of highlight what some of the concerning changes are. But I think in general, a change is gonna need an amendment, whether that's to any of these or anything else would be my thought on that one.
I guess one thing to ask the commission is, you know, what we tried to think demonstrated here was significant changes. So if it comes back, you know, and the applicant wishes to maybe extend some of the patio. Or shift a space here and there, you know, what's the point that?
What 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 defines significant?
Changes to the use.
Yep.
I mean, could you word it that way? That changes to the, if changes were to be to the use, cause that looks.
Well, but if the.
But I guess some of that is in.
And that patio all of a sudden approaches back to the north end of the building or the west end of the building.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, are we worried? Cause there could be other examples of maybe a parking lot configuration changes. And, you know, maybe it's it's still not a concern because things are shielded and screened and everything. But would the commission expect that that come forward too? You know, how detailed, you know?
Can we just say if any significant change as determined by the zoning administrator and planning commission occur? The applicant shall seek an amendment to this conditional use permit. Kind of use some of that last sentence and merge it in with the first sentence. Does that?
Yep.
Does that serve our purposes?
Or would it be better to just take out the a- the adding a bride and groom overnight with the yellow chunk and then go from there? Cause then it kind of out lays out uses and some of that other stuff.
Well, if you talk wedding event-related uses is storage of, is storage of equipment related to the wedding event? I mean, depends on how you wanna define it. I, so I'd rather, I guess I'd rather say less than more. Um but I get your point of saying, you know, the significant changes, if it's a tree moving here, a tree moving there, or a door moving six feet one way. That's not a significant change.
So how this would be applied, I'm trying to think how this would be applied. So uh if the, say we get in um the application and that and there's, there's a change. Um it would be a judgment type of call that staff would likely make on whether or not that should then. Get another uh blessing from the commission or not.
Historically, our our recommendations haven't always been followed anyways, so I think we're probably better off with staff taking care of it. Sorry, I say that a little bit tongue in cheek.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, okay. So, okay, so if we crossed out that section and then put. As determined by the.
Well, can we, if any significant change as determined by the zoning and adminis- zoning administrator or planning commission occurs. The applicant shall seek an amendment?
They still have to come to us first then, right? Cause we wouldn't know.
For the amendment to the conditional use would have to come to us.
It has to come to us.
The amendment does.
Yeah, so it basically amendment would just be like a resumendo of a CUP.
Yeah. Um if any significant changes, can we do that?
Yep.
Okay, then the other thing that isn't addressed in any of these, I think one of the concerns and we were talking about this with regards to the hours of the outdoor patio. Is hours of operation. So we, I think we need to address hours of operation with our conditions. I don't know what those should be, but I think six AM to one AM is a little bit excessive. Especially for, especially for a first, this is our first foray into really something developing in the rural residential district. I don't wanna regret being too lenient with things and wishing that we could have done something differently. Um are there thoughts on hours of operation from anybody on the commission?
Yeah, I think.
Define, define operation.
Just o- hours of open, so like.
Vendors coming in and etcetera?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um I I think Friday through Sunday, what they have is more than reasonable. That's.
And what do they have?
Uh six AM to one AM. But Monday through Thursday was my bigger concern. Um I don't know that there's, maybe there is. But I can't see there being a lot of events that would need those hours during that time. Most people aren't gonna have a crowd for a wedding if you have it Monday through Thursday. At those times, people work. Um I was thinking Monday through Thursday, eight to nine is more than accommodating for.
Any business type event is gonna, I mean, any business type event is gonna occur during business hours and maybe a little past with a dinner.
Yeah.
Or something like that. Um.
I was thinking even like holiday parties. If a company does a holiday party, you you don't want people there past nine usually.
If it's during the week, right?
During the week, I'm okay with that. The weekends, I think one is two huh, is is two humps. I would, I would cut it off either. The conservative person would say eleven.
Yep.
But twelve o'clock would be my outside.
I mean, they're cut off on all their stuff and when I talked about last week too was the event would be done at midnight and that.
Yeah, but there's nothing that says that.
Yeah, that's like the outdoor ceremony too. That's, that's the same thing. There's nothing that can say that.
I mean, obviously.
But everyone would have to be out of the building by one AM and if you're expecting people to clean up, you have to give time to clean up.
Well, yeah.
That's where I think I was coming in with the event hours.
Lot of noise and in a rural residential, and and it is still residential. And and it might not be overly saturated at this point, but at some point, people are gonna be building homes out there. And this event center is still gonna be going on, and those people might not like to have people running around at one o'clock in the morning.
I'd like to see it no later than eleven PM on Friday through Sunday. And if there's special circumstances where they need it, get a permit for it.
End or cleared out?
I'd be more comfortable with event ending at eleven, eleven thirty.
Is that event ending or music end? Cause I know.
Event and music, I think you could say at that point, like the event itself, people need to be leaving at that time.
I mean, I I I put midnight, but I put music end at ten because that's kinda, I was following their guidance. As far as, hey, music got ended ten, gives people time, cause they still lounge around till, and then the event is done at eleven. So they clean up and done by midnight. So I.
I mean, nobody, I don't think there's many people that are gonna argue if somebody's still cleaning up and they leave at twelve thirty. You're not talking seventy people leaving at midnight. Or one o'clock in the morning.
Is it the like, the traffic and the folks coming to and from the site? Um that's the big concern?
At that time of night, yeah.
Well, that and just the general, I mean, people will be outside taking their smoke breaks and and visiting and whatnot. Um.
General din of noise that that hovers, you know, but you kinda wanna be done with that by.
Being it's a residential area you're saying.
I like the, I like the ten PM music um event and twelve PM close for Friday through Sunday.
I don't know if a lot of bands book that early, you know, or.
What bands?
Bands that you book for.
You're not gonna have any bands, are you?
Indoors maybe.
In- in- inside you will, outside you won't.
Thought you were just gonna have.
There's nothing that says that.
Book that early, six AM?
But no, that they close at ten or that they've done playing at ten.
Well, we did in the city here.
Depending upon the uh schedule of the event, you know.
I mean, a lot of them that they're done at, they're done at that time anyway, so.
Start at nine, whatever the case may be. I mean, there there's a lot of fluctuation on day to day.
Well, it's, it's obviously it's, it's not gonna be perfect, so I think that's where it has to come to some type of a.
Some sort of an agreement that's a, that seems reasonable. I mean, we're looking for reasonable conditions. Um it is a residential area. And.
And and speaking to what Nate, you know, he's even trying, this is the whole thing. He's trying to even bring in people to finish developing those homes, right on the other side of me. And that, and and because we're, we're lacking housing. So, I mean, that is only going to expand in this area of of homes in the area that.
I mean, that's, that's a comprehensive plan use is residential out here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, I think, you know, if it becomes, if it becomes an issue, that's something we revisit as a conditional use permit. As an amendment to the conditional use permit. If you're finding that everybody that wants to book your venue on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday night or a Friday. Okay, well.
I think one AM is too uh is too late.
Yeah, um I think we.
Well, that's. I can see eleven, um maybe ten a little early in my mind, but I I see the point of the residential area and not wanting to go too late.
And is it Friday to Sunday or is it Friday and Saturday?
Well, Sunday nights are working for a lot of people.
Right, so that's why I'm wondering, does this apply to Friday through Sunday or is it Friday, Saturday and then Sunday, Thursday?
That's kinda what I'm thinking, because if I was still working and I get up at, you know, five o'clock in the morning, I don't wanna have noise, traffic. And a lot of other things going on.
At five in the morning?
No, I'm talking at one o'clock in the morning, when I'm trying to sleep, cause I gotta get up at five o'clock the next morning.
But then if we're doing it Friday through Saturday, I do think one AM is still a reasonable time for building closure. If you're saying event ending, I think event ending would be more than reasonable to say between eleven thirty and midnight.
But we know that that's.
Midnight and then clean up after that.
Yes, uh which is essentially what they have in there as a draft. Granted, those can change per.
I I, I don't know, I still look at it and say we're in a residential area. Um.
If it was a commercial area, that'd be fine, but this is, it's a residential area.
And that's the only, that, thinking ahead, the whole plan with the city, you know, often there's development out there.
Precincts by doing that.
What do you, what do you?
I, I mean, I personally, I think hours of operation shall be, would be Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to nine PM. And Friday and Saturday, six AM, ten PM music event ends, twelve PM building closure. Or twelve AM, I guess that would be then. Sorry. Midnight. I guess that would be my, my take at this point in time. And if that doesn't, and if that isn't working, that's when you come back with, say, hey, we're finding that XYZ is occurring. And let's, we.
And I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with that, other than that I would just move with the ending an hour, but I can see the point. Like I said, the residential, I get it, ten PM maybe seems reasonable for that.
And it, it's not just about this particular venue or this particular site. It has to do with the entire rural residential area.
That's a good point.
Big rural residential area out there.
Well, yeah, the precedent, the precedent falls within that.
And then you're gonna say, well, somebody else wants to do it, and it's a different, it's a different atmosphere. It's still our.
Could always change, right? It can always, they can or.
Yeah, so if these are the hours that are adopted by the council and then they wish to uh do something outside of that. Then it would trigger that amendment to the CUP. Yeah.
So that.
And I mean, keep in mind too, I mean, every rural residential site is gonna look and operate differently. And there's gonna be different concerns tied to it. You know, if this is an open cornfield uh with no vegetation, you know, it's gonna look different than.
But if you've got a house eighty feet from your build, eighty feet from the proposed building, it's lends itself more to a residential area. Therefore, we wanna be more conservative on the residential side.
Mm-hmm.
Which I get, but this is also a condition on a conditional use permit, not all conditional use permits.
True.
It is.
Right.
So I do think that should be taken into consideration as well.
Um it, ten o'clock music stops, I mean, we're talking about indoor music that's adhering to noise ordinance. Right? I mean, this is, I will tell you that not a single person will book a wedding that says ten PM your music's gotta shut off. Right? So again, if we're adhering to noise ordinance inside the facility. I mean, precedence is set that if it's happening inside the building and it's not affecting anything outside. How do we tell people to shut their music off at ten o'clock and then go home by midnight? I, I think that's, that portion of that becomes a little bit unreasonable in that. I mean, we're, we would sit back and say, okay, well, what's the point of actually having a wedding venue open on a Saturday? That shuts down at ten o'clock at night, like you have to tell your DJ to stop at ten o'clock at night inside, that's not actually affecting the outside.
What do you feel is more reasonable?
I mean, us old people.
If you're not, if you didn't like the ten.
Probably all leave a ceremony at nine, nine thirty, and then the uh the real generation or the other generation. Into the, you know, music and dancing and whatever, so those people do that just.
Yeah, and that's why we laid out the, the typical sites or the, the typical happenings. Um that's what I would say is widely accepted in the industry. Um and precedence is set with area uh venues. Um that operate respectfully within those hours that can go until eleven thirty, twelve o'clock. I mean, even um you take the local venue, Rolling Ridge, their contract says you're done at eleven fifty-nine and you're out. Right? You're out at eleven fifty-nine and then like, you know, the main party is out. And then the, the immediate party can clean up, get their stuff and kind of head out, and they're off at that point.
But we're not talking about Rolling Ridge.
I know, we're talking about.
That's what we were told. We're not talking about Rolling Ridge.
Well, we were talking about precedence.
Commercial, it's a commercial, no.
Yep.
They're commercial though. They're in a commercial.
Zone.
Zone. And they were, and they were restricted when they first opened up, more so than even this is. This is like, again, let's just throw everything, give you pie in the sky is what my opinion is. Because at this point, I think we're not being mindful of what.
I mean, but if we're also asking somebody, like, if they're able to actually run a business. You, forget that it's in rural residential, it's a, it's a conditional use, it's permitted use.
No.
That's what we're looking at here. We're setting the conditions on a conditional use permit.
Yep.
Yes, we need to be mindful that there are people around, but again, if they're following the noise ordinance. And other things like that, I don't see, I think limiting Sunday through Thursday is more than fine, how we have it on there. But people are not gonna book a wedding Friday through Saturday that ends at ten PM. They're just not.
It's not reasonable.
It's not.
It's not a reasonable thought or even.
So what's reasonable? Midnight, one o'clock, eleven o'clock?
Anywhere between eleven thirty and one o'clock, I think building closure would be fine.
Eleven fifty?
I guess, I guess I'd say twelve. I mean, if if ten isn't reasonable, I I think one is, one is excessive. That is full on hours of operation.
Building closure or are we talking party ending?
Building closure.
Building closure.
Yeah, hours of operation defined that as building closure, yeah.
I, I guess I would go with twelve AM if, if, if the general consensus is that. I, I guess I would go with twelve AM if, if, if the general consensus is that ten event end is unreasonable. And I, and I, I get it, but. So Friday, Saturday, six AM to twelve AM, Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to nine PM. Does anybody have any serious qualms with that?
Say that again?
Friday and Saturday, six AM to, to midnight, and Sunday through Thursday, eight AM to nine PM. Anyhow, uh, these are our recommendations to council.
So that's the consensus?
I think so.
Okay, any other conditions or thoughts on other things to tie it to? Okay, um.
I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit based on the conditions as Nate has them written here.
Are you sure you don't wanna go line by line?
No, I'm done going line by line, it's eight thirty. We have a motion and second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Hearing none, conditional use permit is done, we now have a variance request.
Alright, well, I don't know why I popped back to the front here. Alright, so, we'll make this, uh, we'll make this quicker. Um, so, the applicant's proposing to essentially surface three parking lots within their site with gravel. Uh, driveways, entrance, and drop-off areas will all be paved with asphalt. Um, the city code does require surfacing to be paved with asphalt, um, or paver materials. Uh, so these are three parking lots that are proposed to be gravel in nature. Um, when we look at the variance criteria, these are the criteria that, uh, we, um, have to find, um, is being met. Uh, there is a concern in regards to criteria three B where we talk about the plight of the landowners. Due to the circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. Um, you know, that's like, for example, if someone can't meet a setback because there's significant topography wetland features. And the only place to put a building is in X spot, which results in a setback that doesn't meet the code. You know, that'd be an example of that, uh, criteria and how we judge those. Do have a public hearing, so we'd request that a public hearing is open and then closed, and then we have a finding of fact. Uh, that's approval of the request and a finding of fact that is, um, denying the proposed variance request. Um, the commission has the right to impose conditions on, on there as well.
Alright, with that, I guess we'll open the public hearing if there's anybody wishing to speak. I've, I've killed everybody else out of the audience, so we, we should go quick.
Um, essentially what we're looking at doing is just keeping the nature scape as natural as possible. Looking at using some type of pervious material that would better blend in. Um, as is used commonly in, uh, nature venues like this. We want the main, uh, what we'll call first responder access and main parking, uh, per code. To be asphalt or concrete, either one depending on what we choose to use, so that'll be impervious. Just kind of the, what we'll refer to as overflow parking, being in some type of material that blends in better. That is, um, meets the dustless categories, meets the, you know, compaction categories. All of those things just simply blends into the landscape more naturally, that's all we're looking for.
Well, is, we have to open and close, anybody else wishing to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion.
I'd move to approve this variance based on the fact that, uh, we kinda set precedents in the past. With the, uh, Garden overflow parking lot and also the Rolling Ridge overflow parking lot.
We have a motion.
So that's, um.
The motion for, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two V, which is the approval to the variance.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? So then what do we do?
Um, so then the motion would fail if there's no second, um, and then the other motion that the commission would need to consider is the denial.
Okay. Um, I guess I'd make a motion to, uh, deny the variance request, um, by recommending the finding of fact to deny. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero one V. Um, our ordinance requires paved parking. I, gravel or other dustless crushed aggregate surfaces in a lot of instances is considered to be. Impervious anyways, um, I, I don't think that it, I don't think it meets criteria three. Or criteria three B that Nate mentioned earlier.
So why did, uh, this board approve the Gardens?
Storage, it was storage facility, it wasn't traffic, it wasn't parking, their storage facility was gravel. It's a different use, and it's in a different zone.
And each variance should be evaluated independently, I mean, a variance is a variance for that specific site. And it doesn't meet the practical difficulty criteria in this case, that is set by state statute.
So I have, I've made a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and second, any further discussion? Those in favor, aye? Opposed? So the, uh, variance is denied, correct?
Yep.
Alright, with that, I lost my agenda, my battery died.
The only other thing is other business, so just an update, at the next planning commission meeting, we will have five public hearings. Um, don't be alarmed, uh, there, four of the five are interim use permits. For areas, uh, or properties that are zoned commercially but allowed a rental. Um, and then one of them is a vac- vacating interior easements for a lot, so someone can build over between the lots, so.
Alright, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Motion and second. Anybody, I, I'll, in favor, aye. Meeting adjourned.